I'm assuming that's enough. Okay. Look for a motion then to approve those city council minutes.
I motioned to approve the February 7th meeting minutes from city council as they are. I said it now.
And moved by council member Dowdhouse and seconded by council member Severing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are we hearing council member?
She's still muted right now.
Aye, sorry about that.
There we go.
I did hear that aye. That motion carries unanimously. Allow it to enter into our active agenda. And we always begin with public comments. If you have something that you'd like to share with us, please approach podium, state your name and the city that you reside in. And please limit your comments to five minutes.
My name is Doug Anderson. I live at 574 East 1900 North in North Ogden, of course. And would you do me a favor? Who's timing this? Who's one? Whoever's timing, please let me know if I reach out for minutes, please. I have seven things on my mind. I'll list them. I'll be brief. And we can talk later. The first thing is, I noticed in the end of the agenda, it says that letter B, remember the audience addresses the mayor and or council, he or she will come to the podium and state his or her name and address. And in reading through past minutes, I noticed that that has been done until fairly recently where a lot of us have simply said, we live in North Ogden. Let's not let the minutes require us that we should give our address. And so I'm bringing that to everyone's attention. When we stand up, we should say our address. That guy did it. Not just saying. It says right here, address. Okay. Next one. Number two. On the agenda, item four, five, six, and referred to a public hearing. And I'm wondering if that refers to a public hearing that is going to happen tonight. We'll have little public hearings, or if these refer to ones that will happen in the future.
These are public hearings happening tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Number three question is on page six of the packet that was distributed. There's $124,000 increase for a couple of things caught my attention. Wadman Park, 100,000 to 140,000 adults had 40,000. And I'm wondering if that's a change in what is being done, what is being planned, or if it's simply a change in the direct cost of, say, labor and materials necessary to execute the existing plan. You don't have time to that right now. Let me get through my list of seven things, please. And then the same thing about the mountain road trailhead. What caused the design and costs to go up 102,000? Is that just cost being passed through labor and materials, or is there a change in the plan of what is going to be? Number four, excuse me, number five is on in the packet on page seven. Mr. Burns suggested some action to help prevent the green waste from being put in the garbage, garbage cans in order to help relieve costs. And I'm wondering what was done with his suggestion. Number six on my list of things is on page 119 of the packet, there's a request for $5,000 toward the Chalk It Up North Ogden, which I know we have done in the past. I'm wondering. And there's a very persuasive letter on page 120 referring to Mayor Brett Taylor's desire to get youth out of the basements and away from their video games and doing something more worthwhile. Particularly in art. And so that apparently is a very worthwhile thing. And I've been there myself. I enjoy it. And I know a lot of people do. I'm just wondering if maybe there's another way that $5,000 could be raised other than taking it out of our taxes, perhaps private parties. Maybe the Mayor Brett Taylor Foundation, I don't know. Where the pockets are deep enough to afford $5,000. And I don't even know what the $5,000 goes toward, other than the general description of the letter. Don't need to discuss it now. I'm just posing the question, is there another way that that could be funded for that worthwhile activity? And then number seven on my list is the question I emailed to the council last night about flooding. And I would appreciate if you talk about that later. How am I doing on time?
You got a minute 12 left.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Brenda Ashton, I live in North Ogden. Mr. Anderson, it was at my request that we don't have to state our address. Because there are times when I disagree that I don't want people to know exactly where my house is. So the mayor and the council decided that we could just put the city that we live in. We don't have to do our address. I'm sorry if the printing on the back didn't get changed. I also have an opinion on Chalk It Up. I remember when they first came and asked for money. They were told they would get money for so many years. And after that, they were on their own. Last year was supposed to be the last year that the city made donations towards Chalk It Up. So that's my opinion on that one. Thank you.
That was only 45 seconds.
I have another chance, right?
Yes, you do.
And Republic here.
Oh, we're probably sorry.
Anyone else here? Anyone online, John?
No, there's none.
Anyone else here? Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll move on then. Thank you for your comments. And most of your questions will be answered through the course of the evening as we go through the various agenda items. Thank you. Let's see, where are we then? Now we're on to item number four, discussion and or action to consider in ordinance annexing 9.47 acres located at approximately 1651 and 1659 North Washington Boulevard, the Severing property. Our presenter will be Susan Nance. And Susan's not here, so it is Scott. It's John.
I'll introduce it.
All the staff, eventually one of you will get into this.
I'll introduce it and then Scott will back clean up. Okay, so. So wow. Counsel, this is sorry. But this is a piece of property that's been requested down on the south end of town to be brought in and annexed just south of 1700 South. 1700 North. Directions are hard. But so this is 1700 North Street, and this is the property that's owned by the Severing family properties. And the, there's a request. This has gone through the, so this came into the council once where you accepted the application. And now it's gone through the planning commission. And Scott will get into the recommendations the planning commission had. But this has come in with a request for an R4 and the manufacturing zone designation. It's just under 10 acres. This is in the South Town area of the city. What we call South Town. And I think that just for a point of clarification, that the, the recommendation from the planning commission wasn't necessarily, it wasn't unanimous, not universal. It's not a universal recommendation. But it the, and I think the applicants here, they can provide some information as well, but we do anticipate the a conversation on this topic specifically. If the council would like to proceed with what the applicant is requesting, there is a request for a development agreement that would tie the the, the annexation to the promised type of development. Or the council, because it is a legislative item, does have the ability to say, no, we're not interested in annexing. As well as the applicant, if they don't get the requested zones, they have the, the option even after the council votes of saying, well, no, I really don't. I don't want to come in because it's still their right to decide if they want to be in North Ogden City or not, based on the zoning that's assigned. So Scott, is that a good lead in? Okay.
Casey's back. Yeah, thank you so much, council members. So if you're in the minutes on this one, you might have noticed that it was a stacked decision for the planning commission. There were multiple pieces of this decision that came in. Because the applicant has requested a manufacturing zone and it's specific to a use that he'd like to do, which is storage units. It was backed by a request for a zoning text amendment to add storage units back as a permitted use in the manufacturing zone. Planning commission did make a recommendation to permit that. I'll be coming back to the council for your consideration. And then it was further had an application to amend the general plan. So currently the South Town area of the general plan doesn't support manufacturing zoning as land use within that, that designated area. The city went through land use map amendment process in 2020 and 2021, adopting that in late 21 or early 22 that expanded the area of South Town zoning or the South Town land use area with a consideration of mixed use and multifamily down in the southwest portion of the city that goes just about to 1500 North to Washington Boulevard and then up 1700, that entire block of area that it's currently not annexed into the city. Planning commission has recommended that this property be some, some amount of split zone between commercial and R4. There wasn't a specific, they didn't say at what number of feet back from Washington Boulevard. It was just an idea that they'd like to preserve some ability for commercial use to happen on this property. And then permitted the residential R4. So that's the option that you have sitting in front of you. And staff has walked through a number of different entitlement, potential entitlement tracks with this application. You could look at, you know, limited storage capabilities in the commercial zone. That's one that staff is has some concerns with because we do have a lot of commercial zoning left in the city that's vacant and or would probably turn over to a storage unit type of use. The cleanest way that we thought of doing it was amend manufacturing zone. And, you know, have just a little sliver of manufacturing. We don't have a whole lot of that land use left in the city and no more contemplated in the future land use map of the city at all. So we had determined at some point that the amount of manufacturing that, that currently resides in North Ogden was enough to meet our needs. But I mean, that's not the case. So a number of ways to kind of continue this forward and really regardless of the decision of the council tonight on this particular annexation, we're going to see bits and pieces of this continue to trickle forward through the decision. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Scott or John? Yes, council member Dowdhouse.
Scott, I believe this property is on the very south end of the city to the south of the Severing property. Is it unincorporated Weaver County as well, or is it already annexed to another city?
So it's all, if you're to zoom out from this map, it's all unincorporated down to 1500 North, which is the town home project that's in Harrisville City. And the north line of that, their, their backyards is Harrisville City, that little chunk there, so. Thanks, John. So this is the area, that whole piece there minus the town home project that John's, that that one's in Harrisville. But 1500 North is you know, destined through our transportation plan to connect to the west, to the Spring Meadow subdivision on the west side. And then 150 North is a major north-south spine through Harrisville and, and North Ogden City that'll connect north up through just on the west side of Lodge. And that connects through Patriot Point and on up to 2550. So that's a, a major transportation. You're kind of at the corner of what'll be the southwest locations.
Okay. And is it expected that the land to the south of the Severings should someday in theory be annexed to North Ogden, or is there a chance that any more will annex to Harrisville?
No, we have, we've decided between the cities. I mean, there's always a chance somebody will request something, but as far as the ability to provide services, the lines between Harrisville, North Ogden, and North Ogden and Pleasantview are all very well established. So that we don't have any overlapping annexation areas between the three cities.
Thank you.
So the, the area north of 1500 is North Ogden annexation area?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't end there at 1700.
Correct.
Council member Extron, do you have any questions?
I did. Are we determining?
We can hear you in, in the distance, but not very well.
Hey, maybe I'll scoot up. Is that better?
Well, we need to get a microphone next to the speaker, if we can.
Okay.
We're staying up.
We just changed our AV system and it's, it's fighting, so. We'll just go this route. Okay, try that, counsel.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah, you can get the mic a little closer.
Okay.
Okay. My question was just regarding the decision this evening. Are we just deciding on annexation? And we're just kind of mulling over potential zoning? Or is, are we actually deciding zoning tonight?
Yes, you would be, you would. So the, the question was your, the annexation is the decision point tonight. And the city council will need to apply a zone to that annexation if you decide to bring it to the city. So by state code, we can't have any unzoned pieces of property because zoning provides what the underlying land uses that are permitted to happen there. So there really are no floating unzoned pieces of ground left. So you will need to decide on a zoning designation. And it's a legislative decision. So the planning commission's recommendation, you can accept it, you can amend it, you can deny it, and you can do a number of things as the legislative body tonight on what you'd like to do.
Okay, I'd like to hear some of my other council members' input about zoning. And particularly because it sounded like that he wants a manufacturing zone allowing storage units. And I don't know if we've thought through if that's something that we, we want right there, or if we are wanting just straight commercial, or, you know, I, I, I'm unclear about what, what it needs to be in order to get him the type of business that he wants to put there and so on and so forth. So does anybody have any input about that, that, that zone and, and that business?
The, the recommendation from planning commission is the manufacturing zone, no, R4 and commercial. So council member Extron would be commercial up front with R4 at some distance in the back. Is that correct, Scott? Okay. The applicant would like manufacturing up front with R4 towards the back. And then later we would, council would take up the discussion of whether or not we would approve a text amendment with the manufacturing zone that would again allow storage units to be built in a, a manufacturing zone. So if council tonight did decide manufacturing up front and R4 in the back, then we would at a later date discuss whether or not we would take the second step and approve or do the text amendment where we once again allow storage units in the manufacturing zone. Does that make sense?
Yes. So storage units are currently allowed in commercial zones, but not in manufacturing. He wants the manufacturing zone. Is that correct?
No, they are not allowed in any zones currently. It used to be the manufacturing zone. And then they were taken off of the list of approved uses in the manufacturing zone and are not allowed, new units are not allowed in any zone at this time.
Okay, just my two cents. I, I'm not thrilled about having that be you know, we went round and round and round with, with 7/11. And you know, this is kind of the entrance into North Ogden. And you know, again, we're kind of trying to make that be sort of the gateway businesses. I don't know that you know, storage units are really what I want to say. Welcome to North Ogden. So that's just kind of my, but I could be persuaded otherwise, but that's just kind of my initial reaction to them.
Okay, thank you. Council member Dowdhouse, anything you'd like to add?
Sure. As I've looked at this property, because it's on Washington, it's a main thoroughfare. I see it a lot as I'm traveling. When I see it as it is right now, it, you know, it's, it's well kept enough, but it's, you can tell that it's a property that doesn't have a lot of focus. Their, their focus at this point is to eventually sell it and get it developed in some way. And as I look at the property right now, and, and Terry's mentioned this as well. You know, he keeps having a problem with people running into his fence and, you know, having it bend over. And it's just, it's just a lot of work for him to keep it in its current state. The, the more that I've kind of thought about this, our city is going to essentially double in size within the next 30 or 40 years is the projection. And while I'm not particularly excited about the idea of adding storage units into this area, into this area and opening that back up, I, I have to wonder if, you know, in a way, if it's, if it's the Severings' rights to, to be able to do this. And and so I'm not completely opposed to the idea of, of allowing the storage unit. One thing I, John, I don't know if you have this available, but there is a rendering that shows what the Severings were planning on doing with the with the corner and what it would look like. I feel like the appearance was, was pretty nice. It looked good. He has a plan also to line the entire 1700 area space with a, with a solid wall. So it's not going to be like a chain link scenario or anything like that. So it, it should look reasonable considering what it is. And then halfway out of the property, they're planning on doing townhomes. So I, I know that one of the things I mentioned at the original meeting was is, is it possible to add commercial to the space? And, and I, I think that that's something that Terry had considered, but he's kind of gone to bat with some different businesses. And he's, he's asked for businesses to come and he hasn't seen that as a possibility. So from my perspective, the land just, I think the land would, would actually look better if it's developed in this way that he proposes than it stands right now. So that's kind of where I'm at.
I'll chime in with my bit. The struggle I've been having with this is is it the city's? Should we be telling someone who can develop a piece of property in effectively what is a commercial use, right? Storage units are not a manufacturing, they're not making anything. They're not producing anything. It's not and, and I, I queried in the past why it was that storage units were put in manufacturing zones. I think in the past it was done to limit where they could go. Right, as an artificial means of, of limiting where they could go. But that's neither here nor there. Oh, John, a public hearing, do we need to get into that right now?
Well, so that I just, it'd be good for the council to have the public hearing before you get too far down the decision-making room.
Thank you, John. See, and that's when Mayor Bo Rudy does this full time. So let's hold that. I'll pause my comments. And let's open the public hearing. So the public hearing is now open. If you have comments, please come to the podium and limit your comments to five minutes. Doug Anderson, regarding storage units versus manufacturing, I was thinking this, Councilman Swanson, even before you started talking about your two bits about it. That storage units don't make anything, produce anything in, in, in a way, okay, you might say they're kind of a necessary evil. I personally don't think storage units create much of a community by looks, by function. And to, to, to say or think that we're going to make it look better by putting a solid brick wall, it trades one not very nice thing for another not very nice thing. I happen to be in the business of manufacturing things. And they, they create happiness, they create value. Something can be transported, sold, you know, creates revenue, if you will. And so, not, not that I want to put a steel mill or microphone is a nuisance maintenance. That takes four minutes, 40 seconds longer time. Anyway, so I, I would be opposed to having more storage units, especially where they're visible. You know, if they're way back somewhere out of the way where, you know, people driving up and down the Boulevard aren't going to see them in your face. Or even if they're hidden behind a big brick wall. Yeah, maybe that would be tolerable, but I would not like to see them out where where they're going to be part of our community feelings. So that's my opinion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
My turn. Kevin Burns, North Ogden. So I've seen the, the pictures of the, of the drawings of the potential storage unit. And I am speaking in favor of this change to, to, to bring these into the city. I have heard over a number of years a lot of discussion about our high density housing. And this is where people are living. And this is how, this is the lifestyle they're choosing. Because they want to do other things. They want to snowmobile and jet ski and kayak and ski. And we put them in townhomes and apartments with no place to put those things. So this seems like a reasonable fit. It looks like it's going to be attractive and, and would be a nice, a nice fit for that lifestyle that we've talked about over the last few years is this is what we're bringing to the city. And I, I, I've heard the discussion. I listened to it with the 7/11. And although, hey, our, this is our gateway to the city. And, and I remember when you could distinctly tell when you moved from one city to the next. But everything bleeds together so much. I don't think anybody cares. You just, you know, fill a sign up that says, welcome to North Ogden. And I, I think we're covered. We're, we're all moving so quickly and there's so much traffic. I don't have time to pay attention to which city I'm in. I just know where I need to go and get there safely. So that's my piece on. So I, I would support the, the storage units down there to make our lifestyles.
Sandy Cochran, North Ogden. When it's, when it's at least 40 degrees outside, I walk by this area almost every day. I don't have a problem at all with that. I think that looks a lot better than the way it looks now. The guy owns the property. He wants to have a business. I don't see a problem at all with it. Thanks.
Thank you, Sandy.
Terry Severin, from Plain City, but that's the property that I'm working on developing, as you all know. I didn't know we were coming to a baseball game. I brought my bet, but anyway. Yeah, I'm, I'm in grants on the zoning issue. I think that's where some people have the holdup on this, you know, manufacturing. Oh, no, we're going to have all these, this equipment trucks and blah, blah, blahs. It's, it's been a proven fact that in certain, in areas that these newer storage units are going into, residents are against them in the beginning, but once they see them and how nice they are and how they're, you know, because they've come a long ways. And they've actually appreciated them once they've come in. And like you said, your town's going to be doubling. Of course, I'm biased because I'm trying to put this in here, but I think you're going to need with all the townhomes and apartments and everything that you're building up around there. Do you have any questions that I can answer for you real quick? As far as a just a block wall, answer this gentleman's question. It's going to be more of a decorative block wall, plus I'll do some landscape on there. So I really want to make this fit in and tie in with the rest of the community to make it look like it's just not ISO. That's why I picked this building because I think it's a very nice looking building to be the gateway building, which has been mentioned a few different times. I've been told that some of the people actually like this better than looking at a car wash or a, not a car wash, but a gas station. But, you know, again, I'm kind of biased. But yeah. Any other questions I can answer for you?
We'll do that in a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You have one online.
Okay, and let's go ahead and take Brenda here, and then we'll go online.
Brenda Ashton, North Ogden.
Brenda Ashton, North Ogden. Um, I kind of feel like we ran seven eleven out by wanting a certain kind of building. And I guess my opinion is, is if the city wants that much of an elevated building, then buy the property and build the building and then let it who you want to. If this will actually look like this, this is a nice-looking building. Um, like Kevin said, we can put a nice sign on it like we wanted to uh for seven eleven. And I think that's every bit as attractive as a seven eleven or the car wash on the next corner. Thank you.
And who do we have online, John?
Uh, Susan Clements.
Okay, Susan. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I agree with Brenda. Uh, I was quite surprised, uh, and thank you, John, for putting that on so that people on Zoom can see it. Uh, I was quite surprised. I thought it it would be similar to the uh, storage units over by Kavanaugh's chocolates, which are um, which have been there a a long, long time. Um, and I I agree with Brenda. If it's going to look like one of these two pictures, I would be in favor of it. Um, I'm wondering if if this is uh, and we could have Mr. Severing tell us a little bit more about how you use this. This does not look like the classic storage unit. So it, I I'm in favor of that. I think it looks very nice, much, much nicer than a seven eleven.
Thank you, Susan.
And by the way, my name is Susan Clements. I'm a citizen of North Ogden.
Thank you.
Chris Bulbrin, North Ogden. We talked about this planning commission quite a bit, and I think one of the the two key things are property rights. I mean, I think, um, I believe a thousand percent in people being able to build what they need to or want to. But at the same time, the city has a a plan and and an opportunity to figure out what they want to do in that that area. Um, understanding some of the budget and all the things that have been going on lately, I think the the key thing and why the why the planning commission did what it did is that commercially zoned area is one of those choice places that if you put it as something else, you lose that sales tax, but um, which is becoming more and more part of what we need to have as city budget, et cetera, et cetera. So um, developing it does give you property tax now, which is one thing that I keep coming back and forth to, but um, developing future is kind of what we're looking for. And so my opinion, I'm kind of fifty-fifty on both things. Once and one side, you have to think about future and and being able to provide sales tax to generating all the services that North Ogden has at the same time as the property rights of uh individual that is ready, willing, and and right now to develop it. So my hat's off to you for making that statement.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else online, John?
Nope.
Okay, anyone else here? Just about all the public has spoken. Uh, sure. You had a couple of minutes left in your time. Thank you for being a little flexible. Um, I wasn't really looking at the picture when I made my comments, and I don't know even if the picture was up there at that time, but I'm concerned about the height of it. Um, real, I, real close to a roadway. Uh, I'll just express my um, opinion and disappointment that when the car wash went in there roughly seventeen hundred north, it was so close to the roadway and so high, it was in my opinion, an unwelcome intrusion in the beautiful sunsets that we used to see, you know. And if we continue to block off the west there, uh, it's going to be more like downtown L.A., which is the area that I grew up in. You know, walls and walls of buildings instead of beauties of nature that we can see. Not that we can't see it, but you know, it's just one building at a time, kind of blocking off our view. And I don't know how close this is planned to be to the roadway, but it's going to be set back far enough that we can still have some sunshine or or if it's going to be close like the car wash is, kind of a abrupt wall there. Maybe you could answer my question there. That's a concern I have. Thank you. Sandy, you want to get up and use the remainder of your time?
I am. So right across the street from this in where that where the commercial for our development is and those apartments, you're going to have four-story apartments. So I don't think this is anywhere near what that is, and the council approved that. So if that's all right, I don't see why this isn't.
Thank you. Anyone else online, John?
Nope.
Okay. Counsel, it doesn't appear anybody else has anything else to say here, looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the uh public hearing.
My second best.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. She did, okay. I didn't hear. And I say, I I agree. Okay. Now we get back into the discussion part.
So one, one thing, counsel, just to uh point out that the building that's shown on the screen um is the, is the elevation that's being considered. And this, this is where the staff is talking about. If you, if you didn't want to allow for a a storage unit use, that staff would recommend. There's, we also need to add it to the manufacturing zone. Um, and Planning Commission recommended that there be a development agreement. Um, but the, the actual site plan for the facility is that building that was shown out here on the street and then your traditional storage units behind. And then behind that would be our four townhomes. That's, that's the proposal that's been requested, just for clarification.
I'll finish my thoughts then. And and my thoughts are along the lines of have been expressed by some is that I I I find it uncomfortable as a city to say to someone who has a a use that is needed. Kevin, as as you mentioned, that with all the the attached housing that will be right across the street, those folks are going to need and and all the storage units we have now are full. Everywhere you go, doesn't matter where you go. Um, I have a real problem with the uh intruding on what I believe are the property rights. This is a a a use that would be successful. Uh, I I understand the desire from North Ogden City to have to maximize sales tax in the long run. I certainly recognize that. I struggle, though, in telling a a landowner that would otherwise have a very successful business there um, that it's not the business we want. It doesn't generate what we want in sales tax, so we're going to tell you no. Um, and that's, that's the position I'm coming from. Um, I don't have a problem with the manufacturing zone and the R four behind. Um, I would encourage Mr. Severing, if it is approved, that we're going to do the R four with the manufacturing, um, that there be some discussion about some commercial on the bottom floor of that, in addition to some of your stories. Uh, that may or may not be possible. Um, you know, we're familiar along Washington there, it's really just prominence point. We don't have commercial enterprises beating down the doors to build in that commercial strip right south of the car wash there. So, um, you know, it's, it's a, it's a difficult situation. Uh, it's a hard decision to make. Uh, but that's where I'm leaning at the moment. Councilmember Dowpas, any comments further?
Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention is uh, I would only be supportive of adding uh, the M one zone back for this situation. I definitely don't want to put storage units as a possibility for commercial uh across the city. I I feel like this is more of a unique fit. And so we definitely would want to go down the road of uh allowing M one just in this situation is kind of my feeling.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Extrum, any further comments from you?
Uh, Councilmember Dowpas just addressed it because it was, it was my question about if we wanted to allow uh, storage units in commercial or if we needed to have it in manufacturing. And uh, I think I'm in agreement with him. If we want to, you know, put storage units in particular places, I do think I agree, especially listening to the uh resident comments about the need for, especially people that have it, you know, in this multifamily housing, places to put their things that is close by. So, you know, that really does make a lot of sense to have those there. And um, you know, maybe on a case-by-case basis, if we've got other places that want to be annexed in, and if we think storage units are appropriate in those spaces, then they know, then revisit it to the uh manufacturing zone. Is there anyplace else we have manufacturing in the city? Like, is that even a current zone that we use at all?
None that's vacant.
None that's vacant. Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. I think I have been persuaded.
Thank you, Councilmember Extrum. Any other discussion? I'll look then for a motion regarding ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero five. Then with annexed approximately nine point four seven acres located in approximately sixteen fifty-one and sixteen fifty-nine North Washington Boulevard. And as you uh make a motion, please include your recommended zoning.
Mayor Protem Swanson, uh, I motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh five, which is annexing nine point four seven acres located at approximately sixteen fifty-one and sixteen, sixteen fifty-nine North Washington Boulevard. Uh, also, as part of the motion, I uh move that we allow M one zoning at the uh, front of the property and that we do R four zoning at the back of the property.
And utilize, John, should we have a motion utilizing a development agreement?
So there's, there's two ways to do this based on what the council would feel. One is to make this annexation contingent on the council adopting a development agreement, which means there would be a another meeting before it was all finalized. The other, with the M one zone being granted, it doesn't currently allow for storage units. And so the council needs to add that as a use and could do the development agreement at that time. So I don't know if the applicant has a preference or the council has a preference, but um, whatever, whatever you'd like to do. Um, the only thing we might also need to is just a a general feeling about where those two, the line is between the two. Um, you know, from this other picture, um, it's, we don't have a distance measurement. It's about halfway through the property, but in theory, we need, we're going to need a a line at some point. So there's a few, there's future approvals that need to come back through the council.
Uh, I'm, so I will, wh- wh- which of the two in your, the two routes that you're mentioning, is there one that's easier than the other? What, which one will be easier for us to go down?
Um, it, it might be. It's probably easier for this council to approve the annexation tonight and then know that there needs to be the zone change. The hard thing and, you know, for full transparency for the applicant is as soon as the annexation is finalized, the council can't obligate itself to make that future zoning addition of of storage units. And so if he finishes the annexation and the council doesn't authorize the M one zone for storage units, then he's annexed into the city that he doesn't, he doesn't have the ability to build what he wants. So it, for him, it's probably better to wait and bring the it all back as one package um, in a future meeting, but for the ease, it's probably easier to do it tonight. So.
Councilmember Dowpas, if I might, I I would, I would uh recommend that we do a contingent on a development agreement where we can uh come back with the measurements delineating how far back that R four zone goes versus the M one.
So I would like to add to my motion that part of it, it, part of this is that we would like to add a development agreement um, with the Severings that takes into account the exact measurements and the exact uh look of the building, et cetera, to make sure that it's what we expected.
So just to restate your motion, then you're motioning an approval of the ordinance uh twenty twenty-three dash zero five recommending the M one and R four zones contingent on a development agreement to be agreed, to be worked out at a later date.
That's correct.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll say.
I'll second. I have a a quick question, though. Um,
But, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Councilmember Extrum?
Okay, there's, there's my further discussion. Thank you. Yes, do we need to stipulate that we are allowing storage units a- as an allowed use in the manufacturing zone at this time, or is that going to be done later when we do the development agreement?
That'll be done later. We'll have to come back in another meeting where we do a text amendment to that portion of the code.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Councilmember Dowpas.
Yes.
Councilmember Extrum.
Yes.
Councilmember Severing, you recused yourself from this one, and I vote yes. So that passes on a three to zero with one recusal. Uh, John, as soon as possible, if you would get together with Scott and bring back the text amendment piece and begin working with Mr. Severing on the development agreements uh so that we can make sure that we get that beautiful building and uh the other things that we're looking for on that property. Okay, thank you. Hey, counsel, moving on. Item number five. Discussion and/or action to consider an ordinance annexing one point zero zero three acres located at approximately twenty-one seventeen North Washington Boulevard. This is the Far property. And again, this is going to, I'm assuming, John and Scott. A dynamic duo.
Yes.
So I, counsel, I'm going to show this first screen, which is very easy to understand and interpret um, because it clearly doesn't show Washington Boulevard, which occurs out here. So we're going to jump over to the actual Google map version and show you the property. Um, and just so the council's aware, uh, or just so that everyone can see it. Uh, for Councilwoman Extrum's uh purpose, I'm going to try to annotate it at the same time, so I hope that uh she can see it as well. So the area we're talking about annexing is back here in this red circle. Um, and it, um, it is, it is owned by an individual who owns some of the surrounding properties that are already in the city. Uh, but this area is currently in the county, and don't, don't assume that that red line is exactly perfect. Uh, but uh, the what's being proposed for this project, the remaining property that the individual owns in the city is already zoned R four. And so they're proposing to annex this property and zone it R four, and then they'll be coming to Planning Commission with a most likely a townhome development or some sort of connected unit development. Um, and but I just wanted to give you the lay of the land. Scott can give you more details about exactly what those type of projects might look like. So any questions for me before Scott comes in?
Adderall. Thank you. So the, the annexation being requested tonight is residential R four. The planning commission has confirmed that that request. They've um recommended unanimously R four in this area. And it also meets the the general plan designation for the area. So this one, as far as a land use entitlement is much clearer than the previous application we're looking at. Uh, residential R four is our highest density by right zone that isn't the master-planned community zone, which that one has a much higher ceiling for density, but it is completely development agreement-based. So it's a lot of unknowns or uncertainties for applicants. R four is by ordinance, uh capped at a maximum of fifteen minutes per acre. There's some height and setback restrictions there. There's some space restrictions. Um, the average that you're, you're seeing on the ground of other R four projects is between twelve and fourteen minutes per acre. Kind of depends on the configuration of the land and other constraints. So that's, that's approximately what you would expect out of a townhome type project there.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing at this point. I'm just making sure I don't get cattle prod in the side reminding me. So we'll now open the cattle prod in the side reminding me. So we'll now open the public hearing regarding this request. Any comments from the public? Now's your time.
Brenda Ashdown, North Alton. Um, I'm not clear on where this is. Is this by Walgreens?
It, it is south of Walgreens, uh, by, so box storage is in this area.
Okay.
Uh, the cannery is south here. So this is twenty-one hundred north that will basically run into the development on the west side of Washington.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, point number three. The food bank is right here. Where on Fridays they have the food, and that, that's right there, so it's kind of right behind. Anyone online, John?
No raised hands.
Anyone else here? Going, going. Okay, I'll look for a motion in to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Severing. Do we have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Councilmember Dowpas. All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. We'll now have discussion and our action considering ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero six annexing one point zero zero three acres located at approximately twenty-one seventeen North Washington Boulevard with, and a recommended zone to accompany that, uh, motion, please. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that, or Mayor Protem, I move that we accept ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero six, the annexation of the Far property of one point zero zero three acres located at approximately twenty-one seventeen North Washington Boulevard.
And the zone?
Uh, with a zone of R four.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero six as described. Well, we'll call vote. Councilmember Extron?
Oh, are we not gonna have any discussion? Cause I had a couple of questions.
Further discussion, sorry.
I have two questions. Um, number one is what's currently there? And the other is, is, does he have like a right of way, um, property that would connect it to Washington Boulevard?
So the question is what's there, what exists there now, and is there a connection to some sort of, uh, uh, transportation corridor?
So, he owns the, the property directly south, um, which includes frontage on Washington. And what's currently on the property being annexed is there's some large storage sheds or, uh, like agricultural looking buildings that have storage in them. So there's, there's, there are some homes at the front of the property that will most likely be demolished as part of this project.
Okay, does he own those as well, or is he planning to buy them, or?
He owns them.
He owns all of them?
Yep.
All right.
And there is access out onto Washington, approximately twenty-one hundred north, correct?
Yeah, there's a hundred and fifty or a hundred and eighty feet of frontage.
Oh, that means we might actually get a light at twenty-one hundred. That would be really nice.
Does that answer your questions?
Yes, that does. Thank you.
Okay. Further questions or discussion, council? Councilmember Dowpas?
Uh, there was talks about, um, another interested party developing the townhomes to the south of there further. I'm just interested if there will or can be a connection between the two townhome, uh, rest, uh, communities. I'm just curious if it will look that way or not, if, or if that's been proposed.
Majestic Views has a, an approved preliminary plat with ten additional units right there. There is a strip of property between this applicant, the Fars, and that property project. So there's no obligation for us on a private drive that the city can force a connection. If they choose to connect, then they, you know, would have a better traffic flow coming in and out of there, but as of right now, each project, as it's been designed, has to stand on its own two feet with any and all accesses. So the townhome project to the north has a hammerhead at the end of the road that could potentially be extended, but I don't think we have to, we can't require it.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else? Councilmember Severing? I have nothing, so we'll, now we'll move to a roll call vote. For a couple of knocks. Hey, Councilmember Extron?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
I vote yes. Councilmember Severing?
Yes.
Thank you. This is unanimous, three to four to zero. We'll now move on to item number six. Discussion and our action to consider an ordinance amending fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three budget. Presenter will be Jamie Jones, our illustrious finance director. Jamie?
Thank you very much.
Um, if you can pull that mic down so that we can hear you.
Yeah, thank you. So we're here again, um, to talk about mostly general fund and capital projects. So the items for consideration tonight, um, for the general fund is we are increasing, uh, general fund revenues of a net of three hundred and eight thousand. Uh, this does, uh, include removing the ramp grant match that was for the amphitheater. So this was the, um, citizen's donation. We're removing that from the revenue line. We're increasing grant revenue of fifteen hundred. This is for the police department. Uh, they received a grant for some additional training, and then we are asking for the use of Class D road fund balance of three hundred and eighty-one street projects, projects, excuse me, and then, um, also the, all the snow removal expenses we don't incur this year. Um, so to match that on the expenditure side, we are looking at a net of three eighteen, two fourteen. Um, we're increasing, uh, administration seven hundred for a new printer, non-departmental for some firewall software. Again, the police department for that training, that was that grant match. Um, the streets department for the snow removal and some equipment needs there for sixty-one five, and then, um, decreasing the transfer to the capital funds project, and that is removing that seventy-five thousand dollar match. Uh, I just spoke of transferring that to the CIP fund. And then we are increasing, um, the transfer for Class D road fund. So this one is in regards to the Fruitland Drive, uh, road project. Um, when we initially bid that out quite a while ago, I don't know, last summer, maybe, um, it was around a million dollars, um, to do Fruitland Drive and some other side streets.
Work so we can.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And then, um, we just went out again for RFP, and it came in significantly lower, about six hundred and sixty thousand. So we want to ask to go ahead and, um, do that road project this, this fiscal year. Um, and then, um.
Jamie John had a comment.
And, and the contractor who gave us that price said they needed to be done by June thirtieth.
Yeah.
So they had a gap in their schedule they were feeling. And so that's why, instead of kicking it off to the fall where he had planned, we're, we're doing it early.
Thank you. And then, um, Oscar, also answering, um, we're creating a new fund for the debt service fund. This will be for the, the two bonds for the sales tax bond that we did last year. And we're creating a new fund for that, and so we're removing the, um, expense from, right, currently, right now, it's like in the police fund, but we're removing that into a new fund. It'll be Fund eleven for the sales tax bond. So, um, as a whole, we are asking for, um, use of general fund balance of ten thousand two hundred dollars. So then to move on to the capital projects fund, so, so we are reducing the parks impact fee revenues. Um, it's just cause the building permits just aren't there. Um, decreasing that general fund transfer again for the ramp grant matches, but I have to trace it all. And then, um, the increase of the transfer for those Class D road funds for that, um, for that road project. And then to match that, um, on the expenditure side, we're increasing funds for the Lowenby Park. This is so that we can include the pickleball, um, to have done by June thirty. Um, last amendment in, uh, February, we increased it a hundred, or no, we increased the, we increased the budget to, uh, include playground, and now we're including the pickleball, uh, component of that by the end of June thirty. Um, yeah, we increased, we placed the playground last time.
The playground was at Wadman?
Playground was at Wadman?
Yeah.
That was my, sorry. Okay, thank you. I was trying to answer his comment there. Um, and then again, for the road, the road project there for Fruitland Drive. So we are asking for the increase of fund balance of, uh, four hundred and sixty-five thousand um, for capital projects. Most of that is B and C road money, so. And that's all I have.
Okay, wonderful. This is a public hearing. So we'll now open the public hearing, uh, for, uh, the, the current discussion. If you have anything you'd like to say now, it's time to step up to the voting. It's your name and city that you live in.
Doug Anderson, Martha, yeah. So, Jamie, um, tell me if I'm understanding right. My question numbers, uh, three and four in the list that I gave earlier about the, uh, Wadman Park increase of forty thousand from hundred to hundred and forty. And is that, is playground money?
That was playground money, yes.
So that is.
And, and that's to take the playground from being just a standard playground to an all abilities playground where it's wheelchair accessible.
Yeah, which I remember that being discussed weeks ago. Okay, so that explains that. And then, uh, the Mountain Road Trailhead that's going up a hundred and two thousand, I didn't hear that.
So that one was the amendment for last, for last month that we did, and that one, um, is because the cost went up in that park, and then I believe we're adding a restroom in there. So, is that correct?
So I just didn't hear that listed in the things that you just mentioned.
That was not a previous amendment.
Yeah, that was done on, on, Jeff, February seventh.
So that, that's a done deal?
Yes. Anyone else? Anyone online, John?
No.
Okay, council, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing. I second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Dowpas, seconded by Councilmember Severing to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Did we get Councilmember Extron?
Yep.
I didn't hear. And, uh, any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Now consider action on ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero seven to approve the fiscal year budget amendments as have been described. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve twenty twenty-three ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, amending the fiscal year budget twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as described.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember. Seconded. Any discussion?
Uh.
Councilmember Dowpas?
Just because it was recently men- mentioned about Wadman Park, so, uh, that was in a, in, in a previous amendment that we changed it to the all abilities and added the forty thousand, but I did want to mention this is, the public might find this interesting, but we have submitted for a grant on that as well, um, with the Christopher Reeves Foundation. Um, the Christopher Reeves Foundation helps with all ability access to parks and such things. And so, who knows what the possibilities or chances are, but I wanted to thank John and team for putting that together. And so there is a chance that we will receive additional funding through that. I just don't know how high that chance is. I just wanted to throw that out, throw that out there.
Thank you.
Councilman Swanson? Yes. Yeah, I just think, I think it's also important for the public, you know, that we were approached by individuals who were concerned about their children not being able to access these playgrounds. And so that was the, uh, that was the intention of that amendment change.
Thank you. I'll also add that, uh, for the pickleball courts, we have, we do have uh, some private donation coming in, pretty significant in the form of concrete and concrete work, um, that will significantly reduce the cost of putting in those, uh, much clamored for pickleball courts. Start signing up for them now so that you can get your spot in twenty twenty-nine. And, and also regarding the debt service fund, uh, in having that new line item in the budget, it makes it more transparent and easier for residents to look at that and see uh, where that expenditure is happening rather than it being buried somewhere else in, in, because heaven knows those budgets are so easy to look through, unless you're an accountant. And it's like reading a storybook. Any other comments?
Just.
Councilmember Extron, anything from you?
Nope, that seems really clear to me. Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dowpas?
I'm very intrigued to hear that the bid came in so much less expensive for that Fruitland improvement, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars saved. We better jump on this one.
Yes, yes. Okay. Well, I have a roll call vote. Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
I vote yes. Councilmember Severing?
Yes.
Councilmember Extron?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, Jamie. Much appreciated. Council on item number seven, I'm going to move that we moved that to after item number ten, uh, so that we can take care of the more actionable items and then get into the discussion that item number seven will inevitably incur. So I move that we make that change. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move item number seven down to after item number ten. So we move on then to published item number eight. Discussion and our action to consider an ordinance adopting Title Eight Public Ways and Property, including private landscaping on private, um, public property, addressing private improvements on public lands owned by North Alton City. Uh, for those of you that follow our meetings regularly, we've had some instances come up, um, where, uh, this is a subject of discussion, and we're looking for a way that would allow residents to beautify the land without unnecessarily encumbering or removing access to public land. So if they want to make it nicer, we're happy to let them do it. If we can find a way to do that. Our presenter will be Scott Hess, our community economic development tracker. The cleanup hitter.
Thank you, council. I'll read this word for word. Now we'll do this a little bit, uh, easier. We've had this discussion a couple of times. John and I have gone back and forth. We wrote down all the con- uh, concerns and questions from the council, and we've addressed those in this ordinance with the exception of a couple that, uh, there were still questions on it or we didn't hear it in the unanimous decision. So just for your, to make you aware, what this would be is the permit required issuance that would be staff level approval of someone's ability to come in and utilize property that is publicly owned. We'd use the land use permit process. It's a forty dollar permit. It's, we find it to be just enough skin in the game that an applicant or property owner is willing to submit that. Um, and also it gives us an opportunity to go through and really save the, the residents from any future code enforcement issues because we vet out all of those locations and what can happen. So it's a pretty painless administrative, easy turnaround time, just takes a few days typically, depending on our workload, sometimes faster. Um, and we thought that was the appropriate level of permit required in this case. The pieces that are still up. The pieces that are still up for your consideration or we'd like you to consider are. Those limitations. So uh there was a question about secondary watering and sprinkler systems on these properties. I had a conversation with. Um Ben at Pineview Water Systems and his recommendation at this time was to to essentially. Not specify it, but if the property is metered, then the property owner only has a certain capacity of water that they have to utilize for secondary watering and then incur additional charges. So. In that case, if they were to allocate some of the water that they're given on their piece of property to water a section of property that's owned by the city. They could do that. It would be kind of like a like for like exchange, but in no way does it grant them any additional water rights. If the property is un-metered, his recommendation was essentially just to not let them do a sprinkling system. So that's going to need to be looked at on a case by case basis. However, the state code has changed requiring all secondary water systems to be on meters by twenty twenty-eight or s- it's it's coming up. The timeframe is quick, you know. Pretty quick for those secondary systems. So that's an issue that's going to take care of itself as we, if we grant, you know, a number of these permits over time. The other piece is fencing. So right now limitation is no permanent structures that would improve fencing. Um council could either eliminate that and or provide an opportunity for, again, a case by case basis. There's, I I've had discussions, council members, on reasons why you may or may not want to fence it. Um one being if the lease is for. Uh an agricultural use, for instance, you really don't want somebody just tromping through the field that you spent a bunch of your own. You know, personal money planting in that case. So fencing it and securing it seems reasonable, especially if what you're doing is beautifying and creating a. You know, more utilization of that property. So um staff is willing to consider any of those, you know, friendly amendments. We can discuss those. Otherwise. Um it's just, there's a lot of text here. It was built off of another ordinance that the city already has. Um that just sort of covers a number of liability cases and other. Permits and issuance and denial and how it works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, one thing I didn't see in there is we talk about leasing, but there's no schedule of lease rates. So is it a handshake lease? Basically, there's a, there's no charge, but we're calling it a lease?
That's a good question.
Or is there a rate?
So with all the other uh property in the city currently, Monroe Boulevard is the best example, it's ten dollars a year. The idea being that there's money to, because you have to have an exchange for a contract to be valid. Of either good services or money. And so we can't just say nothing. So it has to be. A dollar or ten dollars. Um most real estate contracts say ten dollars. Um the idea being that it's nominal, it's and so that's, that's what we've typically done for these type words where there's a lot of benefit to the city.
And and on the fencing piece, I don't have a problem if it's like a barbed wire fence, if they're doing something agriculture in nature. That would keep the average person from just tromping through it. Um I I think it defeats the point of. Uh if you're gonna use a privacy fence and wall it off as if it's your own, you're not paying taxes on it, right? That's just my, that's my feeling, but I'm I'm open to persuasions, council member Extron would put it. Counsel comments. Councilmember Extron, what are your thoughts?
Well, this is interesting because I I'm not sure hmm. I I kind of hope people will utilize this, quite honestly. Where it's, you know, they're willing to take this on as a stewardship and say, I'm going to make this beautiful. But I'm not going to make it just for myself and I'm not going to claim it as my own and get, you know, claim squatters rights on it and then try to purchase it later. So I like the way this has been put forth. I like the idea of leasing it for ten dollars or whatever it is. It's just. You know, but I I I really hope. If we make this known, it's like, yeah, this is available for you to do, especially people that really enjoy working the land. You know, I can, I definitely agree about the privacy fences, no privacy fences, because that defeats the purpose. But um. Yeah, I I don't know if there's some sort of. I I don't know about barbed wire, but you know, some way to keep people from just tromping through it, I think is great. Maybe we can think through something like that that would be. More friendly than barbed wire, but um but I I agree with with your as um assertion that it might. That might happen and I would like to prevent that from happening, especially if someone's put some um effort into it. So yeah, I I like what this has done here. I don't see anything other than, you know, the leasing, if that needs to be added into the wortage, but. I, good job, you guys. That was, that was, you know, having to hammer that out was was well done. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Extron. Councilmember Severin, what are your thoughts?
Um well, my question, my first question was, uh so there's a forty dollar permit application?
That's the, the land use permit is a forty dollar fee and that's for all fences, sheds, additional concrete, improvements on your property that have. Impacts or impervious surface. And we use it as, and it captures a tiny amount of our time. Um definitely doesn't cover the. Department of Department of Staff's time in in reviewing those by the time you spend it, but it's just a. If they're free, no one will apply for that. But if there's some cost, but it isn't. Exorbitant, then we find that people will, are willing to put their small amount of money there.
Okay, so I mean, if somebody was not going to be like, like what we've discussed in the past, if somebody just wanted to beautify it, they still would have to pay a forty dollar permit fee.
Right.
And then perhaps a ten dollar lease per year or a dollar. You know, looking at the consideration on the contract. So um John, does this have anything? I mean, I hadn't thought about this, but easement by prescription?
Uh you can't get an easement by prescription against government.
Against government, okay, never heard that before. Okay, and then we would probably just utilize like a uh some kind of a hold harmless. Document or something like that.
Yeah, that's what our current lease on Monroe says is that uh there's certain things they're responsible for um and that the city's uh. That they're uh. My brain is not working today.
Hold it to me.
I indemnify certain things that the city is indemnified from.
Okay.
By the lease or.
And I agree with councilwoman Extron. This is, uh I think this is an excellent ordinance. That will meet the needs. So thank you, Councilman Swanson, for recommending that and for the work that's done to create it.
Thank you for your your real estate expertise. Things I wouldn't have thought of. Councilmember Dowpass, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is there, do we need to have anything in place for if somebody sells their property and it's adjacent to one of these places that was cared for? I could see a situation where someone sells their property and somewhere along the line, it was not discussed that, hey, we've been maintaining this. Could you please keep it up, you know, so? I don't know if that could be written in or should be just a thought.
So they're not transferable. So section eight eight six, transfer assignment prohibited. Limits the ability of that property owner to assign it automatically. So that next property owner would have to come in and in that way it protects both parties. Both protects the city as the third party, but it also protects the seller and the buyer because the buyer doesn't buy ground that they are automatically obligated to approve if they don't want to. Um and you know, it just protects us that that property is not going to continue and perpetuate to be transferred over. So. Second property owner have to come in and make that application and or we'd have to extend that lease to them at that time.
Okay.
So that would just have to be clear before you sell it in the buyer.
Okay, maybe, maybe it could be put somewhere and, you know, when they sign up for the permit that, hey, this is, please notify the next person or something. Um and then one more thing, um. My only concern about allowing fences of any kind is sometimes when you invest money into something, you feel you have a sense of entitlement in a way. So. If somebody's allowed to put a chain link fence uh uh across the property. It just worries me. Um it hopefully doesn't create this expectation that this is, this is somehow mine. So I'm, I I don't know if we could. Put some wording in there that makes it very, very clear that, hey, even though you're putting this hundreds of dollars or thousands of dollars worth of fence that it took you to install that. We could ask you at any moment to take it down. Not that we would, I'm just saying if there's a a reason.
And it 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 does talk about that if we extend our option that we have in there to pull the lease from the property owner per the code. That we don't pay any of the fees. So there are private improvements that they've put in and this is the same as Monroe. If if somebody's putting. Improvements into the Monroe corridor and we have the funding to then construct Monroe, we're not paying those property owners back for any. Improvements, land improvements, regrading, anything that they've done in that network.
Sounds like you guys have it all figured out. I'm just asking these questions.
The the fencing one is, the fencing one's a good question because it it leaves it up for interpretation. You know, what is, what is the interpretation of? I I understand what like a three rail farm fence looks like. Uh other people might feel like. A vinyl fence with slats in it is providing that visual relief. You can see it, but it it also protects the property. Um you know, what level of privacy is privacy and and I, I know these are prob- these are questions that are going to come back based on one. Current situation that we have if this goes through. And so um if you want to leave that up to staff to consider and. If you want to see it again, I can, you know, we can think through that and bring it back with some transparency requirements um. Or you leave it up to. An administrative decision. Because I think the inherent use of some of these properties. Will be a little bit different. It's almost an extension of someone's backyard as opposed to I'm going to use this to farm it because I. Already run five acres and there's ten more and I can do a little bit more alfalfa. So every, every property is going to be looked at on an individual basis.
John just resolved the issue right there. He just put the right so verge in. And and the the council could pick any percentage, but a good example is you're not going to be able to physically build a vinyl fence that will have. Um more than, less than, sorry. The vinyl fence will require fifty percent transparent, non-transparent material to just stand. And so if you, if you do something like this, then that would allow tw- that would allow chain link, split rail fences and things like that.
A lot of iron fences. So seventy-five percent transparency is the number that we use for the front yard fences in the Clearview Triangle. So if you use that number, that'd be. Yeah, thank you, John.
But keep it the same. It's always the same interpretation.
That's, no, that's great.
That's helpful, yeah.
Uh anything else, Councilmember Dowpass?
So uh yeah, just quickly, uh Councilman Swanson, so uh with that privacy fence is more than. Twenty-five percent non-transparent, that's going immediately into the ordinance. Okay.
Yep. Which would be better. I mean, staff would like that better.
Okay, uh the two things. Counsel, I I'm happy with allowing staff to make the determination on the fencing piece now that we've got this written in. And like that being administrative decision rather than adding to council's list of things to do. And to hear and to render judgment on. Also, John, in the lease, can we have as a portion of the lease? A requirement requiring, a requirement requiring. Wow, I can see Sandy smiling at me. A requirement that disclosure must be made at the time of sale, should they sell the property. That they must disclose to a potential buyer that. This piece of ground that looks nice and pretty and looks like it belongs with the property. Uh must be disclosed as belonging to the city with the lease and all that kind of good stuff. So that there is that legal requirement to disclose.
I see the recorder isn't here tonight. One way to solve that too would be to record the lease against the property, then a title search would find it.
Oh, even better. Even better. Counsel, are you okay with that? Okay. Councilmember Extron, are you okay with that?
Yeah, that sounds great. I just had some input about the fences. I was just thinking about that. Um you know, just.
Go ahead.
In in describing it, you know, kind of visualizing it, I would like to see something that. Did not make it seem like it was not accessible by the public. So something that's not too high and transparent, enough to deter someone from just tromping across it, but. You know, so that someone could actually go in and and see the beautifications that have been done and that it is enjoyed by everybody. That's. I I think that's kind of the point of what we're having here is that we're, it's still public property, it belongs to everybody, but. To with some level of protection for, you know, the investments that has been made in beautifying it. So um if. In staff's uh evaluations of fencing that want, you know, somebody wants to put fencing in, that. That is taken into consideration of just making sure that it still seems like it's accessible public land. Does that make sense? So that was just two cents.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, any other thoughts or comments? That being the case, we will look then for a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. Adopting the restructured Title Eight Public Ways and Property.
Councilman Swanson, I move that we approve twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. Uh ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, adopting Title Eight Public Ways and Property. Including private landscaping on public property. And private improvements on public lands owned by North Alton.
Thank you, councilmember Severin. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second.
Give that one to Charlotte.
Aw, thanks. And I feel like I'm participating.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion, counsel? John?
So counsel, just so you're aware, I did add this sentence here in yellow as well that says. Let me make sure that council member Extron can see it. Now, I might have shared the wrong one, but the idea is. Um it's the the language that just says the permit holder has to disclose the existence of the permit to the successor in interest. So that gets to that point. Um just to have clarified that the boundary, property boundaries and the necessity to get a permit by the new per person. So.
Do we need to have it in writing that uh our recorder will record the lease against the property or do you think that's more effort than it's necessary?
I think we're, we'll be allowed to under any lease if we want to.
Okay.
So I think that's okay.
Okay, great.
You know what? Can I, I'm just thinking from, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking that uh. You know, section seven on the web C, is this going to be opening up the can of worms?
I I don't think so, because really it's just putting, it's, it's, it's putting them on notice. That where the boundary is. They should already know because of the, they should be looking at a plot plan. They should be looking at the county records. No one ever does. If you ever buy a house, look at the, look at the flat, everybody in the room, everyone listening. Um because a lot of stuff will be disclosed that way, but I I think it's okay. And especially with the, the idea that they can't adversely possess or boundary by acquiescence against the city. Um then there, it's, I think we're okay there. I don't think it's going to cause a mess for those trying to close.
So is a title company going to say? Uh I mean, I could just see a title company saying. Do we have to have some kind of comment, permission from the city?
Uh it would only if the appraiser put value to the the improvements that were on the city property. I mean, that's the only time you're really going to run into issues with it. Because the financer is going to, in theory, know that or think that maybe that. Flower bed is adds value to the property, but I'm not, I'm not sure that.
They probably would not know that it's owned by the city, though. But I'm just, I'm just kind of curious about the, from the title side.
So it it shouldn't impact the, impact the title to their property at all.
So it doesn't appear as though it's kind of like a lien against the property.
No, it shouldn't. Yeah, I mean, all all they'd be doing is essentially telling the next person, hey, we've got, we have a permit to use this property the city owns.
Okay.
So it shouldn't, it shouldn't color their title of their property at all in a negative way.
Okay, well, you are the real estate attorney.
Great questions. Thank you. Again, bringing that real estate expertise to bear for us. Any other comments or discussion from counsel? If none, then we'll look for a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three.
We already got it.
I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three dash oh nine.
We we actually did the motion and.
Oh, that's right, we do. Jeez, looking at both. Thank you very much, folks. I'm just testing you and you're all passing with white colors. So, councilmember Severin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpass?
Yes.
Councilmember Extron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That passes. Four to zero. Sorry, keep track of everything when you're participating in the discussion itself. Four to zero. Sorry, keep track of everything when you're participating in the discussion itself. Sorry. Hats off to Mayor. Okay, item number nine. This is related to item number eight. Discussion and/or action to consider when ordinance amending Title Three related to leasing of city product, property and Representative John Paul.
Thank you, counsel. So, uh, this section is the section of the code that helps the city identify when they're, when we're working with what we call a significant piece of property. That's a state-defined term. And in the past, we've always said everything is a significant piece of property. Any property right held by the city has to go through the city council for lease, rent, sale, or anything. So, uh, bullet point three or subsection three would be adding this language that says, uh, the property that's leased for less than two years is not considered a significant parcel if it's less than one acre in space. Uh, and then it, by, you know, used by a private group, organization, individual. Um, the question that the council had kind of hanging from last meeting was how big of a parcel do you want that to be? And how long of a term? You know, the term could be five years, the term could be one year, and the parcel could be half an acre, the parcel could be 10 acres. It just is totally up to, uh, the council on those two measurements. So that's it. That's what I got.
So parcel size and term. Counsel, your thoughts on parcel size? Councilmember Dowpas?
Uh, was there any reason that staff decided on one acre or was that just a start to the discussion?
Just to start, Scott can probably answer, a significant number of our parcels are less than one acre. Um, but when you start getting bigger than that, then there's a risk, for example, of someone, I mean, essentially the mayor would have the authority to lease ground that's for anything and the council couldn't object to it. So if, if the zoning code allowed it, then we can lease it for um, underwater basking leaving competition.
Which is highly likely.
Yeah.
In January, yeah.
Okay, um, I'm okay with the two-year term. I don't, uh, uh, unless if there's some sort of administrative issue with that. I don't think that there, I don't think this is going to be used widely in the city. I think it will be used in exceptional situations. So I'm, I'm not really hung up on the, the term. So the two-year term, fine. Uh, one acre seems like a lot of property to maintain in this situation. Maybe it should be reduced a little, but it, it kind of depends on when you did, Scott, when you did the analysis of all the property. The amount of one acre or higher pieces of property that are unimproved is probably few and far between. So, I don't know, but anyways, that's where I'm going.
Thank you, Councilmember Dowpas. Councilmember Severin?
Uh, I'm, I'm okay with, uh, I, I agree with, uh, Councilman Dowpas, I don't think we're going to have much of an issue. This is technically going to be the little small pieces of ground next to the detention basins and so forth. So I'm okay with even a five-year lease. Um, I, I, it doesn't matter to me each one, either one. Um, size, I just can't see us ever getting to an acre of ground. I mean, if somebody's going to be wanting to lease from the city an acre of ground, I would, I would be concerned about what they wanted to do with that.
Should we reduce that size so that that will come back to council?
Yeah, I mean, I don't. Yeah, I would say quarter of an acre. And myself. No, no, I'm sorry, John. I'm just thinking, I mean, I know this is kind of just kind of collaborating, but.
One, one thing I didn't ask you was, um, do you want it? Uh, an, an area that's leased or the parcel that's being talked about, like a portion of it being leased a certain size? A good example is, you know, over by the, the the question park, you know, there's a six acre parcel there. Well, would we allow someone to lease a quarter acre of that? Or did they have to lease the whole thing?
See, and I would think that if somebody's going to try to use an acre of ground, we're not just going to be beautifying it. They certainly could bring in animals and so forth, right?
Uh, on Monroe, we let people bring animals in.
But is it zoned for animals? Okay, so that kind of answers a little bit of that. I would say, I would say that we probably need to have a little bit more control.
Okay.
If it's something larger than maybe a quarter of an acre. That would be my recommendation, only because I'm concerned about the liability side of that.
Yeah, Scott, come on up.
I think the difference here that you're going to create is you're going to draw the line in the sand of the administrative decision versus what you want to see. So we were just asking the property owner who has, you know, we have had this issue with, we were trying to determine back napping, how much property that is to decide, you know, is this one that would have come to the council for decision-making, was it not? Dave's thinking it's like point three acres, something like that. It, I was thinking it's a quarter acre or so. So in that realm, that's about the land area that you'd see where staff can still make that decision and or it's got to come to the council for anything larger. Anything over an acre is going to be one of our significant pieces of property that we have, which would be right away parcel like Monroe. Um, up here against Mountain Road is a good example of city-owned property. And so those would be, I think, few and far between and we'd get, the council would get involved in that lease at that time.
So Scott, are you recommending a third?
Is that at least a half? I mean, I would, I would say at least a half because that, that just gives enough legal room. That's 20,000 square feet. It's a lot of land, but at the same time, it's not a huge amount of property, especially if you live on the backside of one of these detention or drainage basins and you have a significant width in that drainage basin. You might have 20,000 square feet there that is never going to be touched by a piece of equipment for flood control that you may just want to have your backyard extend down into. So I'd say at least a half acre. The timeframe doesn't matter as much because they're perpetually renewable leases up to the point that the city wants to utilize it and then we can um, pull that back. So there's two years, five years, whatever, really doesn't matter for staff.
Right, thank you.
So I would just, I would just agree with, with Scott on the half acre.
Okay.
That'd be my.
So half acre? Okay. That's kind of my thinking is half acre. And, uh, John, the question that you just asked a moment ago, do we piecemeal it or is it the entire parcel that's marked? I would say the entire parcel is marked. It can get really messy for staff. Yeah, say the six acre portion that you mentioned, somebody wants to lease 20,000 square feet of that, that, that it'd have to be marked off and delineated. Okay, come back to the podium. I want you to verbalize that.
We'll, we'll use the, I won't, I won't use top of the other thing. Here's the, here's the use case that we're.
Oh, because that piece is huge, isn't it?
The parcel for the detention basin access road is a larger parcel. I, I'm not suggesting that we make an applicant go through a subdivision process, create a parcel for the lease, not even probably have a title company or a surveyor go up there and spend $2,000 to carve off a piece. It would be more, this is your land use permit. This is what you, you'd say you'd mark down on that piece of paper, I'm going to do 150 feet along this property boundary, you know, this line here, and we get an approximate, approximation of what they're taking on. So, and I was wrong, it's point one.
Yeah, I see your point.
So in this case, it's kind of, uh, I think this is going to be your uh, more representative of your use case. Okay.
That explains the, that you gave.
Appreciate that.
Maybe not so bad.
Okay. Then never mind on the, the whole parcel piece. I hadn't thought of it in that, in those terms. Okay, other other questions or comments from staff or council?
I do.
So the, uh, uh, Councilmember Extron?
Yeah, I'm just trying to wrap my head around those. So say, for instance, we've got somebody that has part of Oaklawn Park as their backyard and they want to lease part of it. Um, you know, is this something that we're, we're entertaining here? Where it's like, okay, it's an unused part, it's not developed, it's not anything. So are we saying that they can kind of extend their backyard essentially, use part of it for this lease agreement? And it's the size of whatever parcel we say for basically in perpetuity, to, in per- perpetuity, thank you. Um, until they sell their property or they just don't want to renew it. And then what is the trigger for renewal? Are they going to have to just like re come in every year, every five years, every three years and say, yes, I want to keep doing this? Um, or do they just stop renewing, but they still continue to use it? So I'm kind of trying to figure out how this is going to work in practical terms. Can somebody?
The part that I, the part that I could hear, maybe Councilmember Extron, if you could move closer to the mic on your device.
Let me try to set the mic.
We're, we're not hearing you terribly well.
I wonder if there's something wrong with my microphone.
Okay, try, try again, Councilmember Extron.
Okay, is this better? Uh, this is the microphone. I've used all the other meetings and it seems to be fine.
Yeah, no, we're doing better. It was our microphone on this end. So as far as the term goes, that would be the two-year lease, the renewable every two years.
So are they going to get like a notification that their two years is up and at, being asked if they want to renew or is it just? Renew?
They would be getting notification and I would assume a date by which they would need to renew.
Okay, and then, so they are.
If you could restate the first question that you had about somebody wanting to extend their backyard.
Yes. So if their backyard is saying going into a park that's not being used, I mean, I think about Oaklawn Park, for instance, because we actually had somebody that wanted to do this, right? So, um, do we allow them to then kind of put, you know, a, a, a non-permanent structure back there, um, improve it, but not fence it in? So it's, it you know, i- it's still part of the park, but they're kind of being able to access it from their yard. Um, is, is that kind of what we're, we're thinking about doing with, with this ordinance and this lease option?
Uh, uh, on, answer from my perspective, I hadn't, uh, envisioned park space being a part of this because while it is public property, it's being used for a public interest. It's not just sitting there inactive and dormant where, uh, as we uh, as, as is the case with, uh, the Willis property uh, that kind of got all this started and some other instances that have been brought to our attention. Um, it isn't park space. So I, I would think from an administrative standpoint that staff would say, uh, no, you can't lease any portion of a park, even though it might be a corner that's relatively unused. That's my interpretation. Counsel, any other thoughts?
So.
Or staff?
Yeah, um, in the example, the councilwoman Extron mentioned, um, Oaklawn, let's talk about the north boundary of that, that's a, a, along one of those subdivisions, uh, south of 2600 north. Uh, that to me would not be at all a good example of a situation where it would make sense to allow a resident to take over some space because it's a, I've been back there and it's a nice, beautiful area and you would interrupt it from the state that it's at where even though it's un, unimproved, it looks really nice and scenic. So I, I think that the staff, I'm assuming that the staff would just put a stop to any permit requests that are right along the park unless if there's some, uh, part that I'm not thinking of that has this horribly ugly part of the park that is undeveloped that it, that would stand to be improved, maybe.
A- and I would assume, John, that, uh, staff has sole discretion to grant or not grant. This doesn't create some kind of an entitlement.
Well, so it, yeah, the idea is that the, the planning director makes the call, any appeal goes to the mayor. Um, but, uh, you know, the idea is, and, and Oaklawn might be a good example, is I've, I've changed the language a little bit to say that the, the parcel that we're talking about has to be less than this size and the area leased has to be less than this size. Um, because then those big parcels like Oaklawn or like the one by the Equestrian Park, they're too big. And the way that those big parcels can be impacted is, has to come to the council. Because now you're getting above that two acres or acre and a half, whatever number you pick. Um, I did take two acres because the property that we've talked a lot, a lot about is like 1.03 acres or something like that. It's just over an acre. And so just as out of abundance of caution, I rounded it up to two, the, but I'm I think, you know, I'm open. The nice thing is this ordinance can always be scaled back. Um, if we just put it on an agenda and tweak it, if the council has questions over it.
So. Thank you. And we think also on that Oaklawn uh, discussion, there's also a trail that goes through there. There's a cycling, hiking, walking trails that goes through. So there is public use of that already that we would not want to impinge on and that I'm sure staff would be watching out for. So Councilmember Extron, does that answer your questions?
Yes, yes. Thank you very much. That was, that was helpful. Well, besides, I mean, we're just trying this out, right? This is kind of our first foray into it and then we've you know, it's, it's a living, you know, our ordinances are living. And so if we find that they need to be tweaked, that can be brought back and tweaked.
I haven't seen a perfect ordinance passed yet.
Indeed.
They will undoubtedly come back at some point. Okay. Any other discussions or comments from staff regarding this or council? Okay, then we'll look for a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three. Uh, we are on that one, yes. Twenty twenty-three dash zero nine. As, uh, amending Title Three as we have discussed related to leasing of city property. We have a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine as outlined.
And not the mayor, but we'll let you do the.
Mayor, pretend. Sorry, Councilman.
That's okay.
Now I'm calling you Councilman Extron.
Then, then that's just fine.
That's kind of how things are going in my brain today.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Extron, anything further?
Nope, that sounds good to me.
Hey, this is a roll call vote. I vote yes. Councilmember Extron?
Yes.
Councilmember Severin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
That is approved unanimously. Thank you very much, counsel and staff for all your hard work on that. I think this is a great resolution to, um, just to, yeah, I think it's just a great resolution to the issue that came before us. Item number 10. Discussion and/or action to consider funding Chocotop North Ogden, uh, uh, we start that over again. Discussion and/or action to consider funding for Chocotop North Ogden activities. Presenter, John Paul.
Uh, counsel, so this one was referenced earlier, uh, in public comments. Um, but we have traditionally funded the, uh, the Chocotop Festival to the tune of about $5,000 a year. I believe that money is funded out of the RDA fund. Um, so that's the money that, uh, we get from all the taxing entities in the area. So mosquito, fire district, school board, everyone agrees to pay a little bit, or get a little bit less of their property tax. And then it goes into this fund that then funds these kind of economic generating activities. Um, that's where it's been funded out of. Uh, there was a conversation uh, several years back as this was started about scaling it back. Um, and so this was the year, we talked about this a little bit last year, and I think that the thought was maybe it was time to do that. Uh, they have indicated they would sure like to receive our funding again this year. Uh, their event happens in August, so this would be for next budget year that we'll be talking about over the next coming months, but we wanted to get an answer on this one so they could plan uh, their activities. Um, I think right now we're still planning on providing them with some other support, um, including cones and things like that. There just wouldn't be any financial obligation from the city based on the conversations before. Uh, so they asked that we bring it back. I don't believe we have a representative from their group here. Uh, we just, we have a letter from the, uh, Greg Thorpe, who was the founder of the Just a Break Foundation and the Chocotop Event.
Thank you, John. Counsel, I'll remind you that our RDA expires at the end of this year and we have to have all of the funds that are currently in there and that will continue to accrue through the end of the year. We have to have all of those funds programmed. Uh, we have to outline what they're going to be expended on. And then, John, it's a four-year period after that, that we have to actually make the expenditures?
Um, I don't know that there's a deadline, but we have to have a, a pretty. Um, I don't know that there's a deadline, but we have to have a, a pretty strict plan and schedule, okay, so.
Okay, comments, thoughts? What are your thoughts on the funding of this, the five thousand dollar asset from Chalk It Up North Ogden? Councilmember Extron, let's start with you on this one.
Well, I was just wondering if I should recuse myself. I was thinking about that and the conflict of interest because I own a business where it takes place. So, um, I, I do see it as a great community event. There's lots of people that come out, lots of people that enjoy it. I think it's a fabulous thing. Um, I would have to look back at our business to, records to see if we do in, you know, experience a, a bump in sales from it. I can't see how we wouldn't in, you know, considering that it's, uh, just increased exposure, but there are quite a few businesses around there. Um, I think it's a draw, uh, just to get people into North Ogden and to see what we have here. Um, so I don't know if I will, I think I will recuse myself from voting, but that's just, uh, the, um, just my input on, I think it's, it's a worthwhile investment for RDA funds as, you know, a business owner, so. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Councilmember Dowpas, your thoughts?
Uh, I'm supportive, especially since RDA needs to be programmed, uh, soon. Uh, and I did want to mention, because it hasn't been mentioned in the presentation, that I believe that our council liaison, uh, Ryan Barker was in support of this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Severin?
Uh, John, we might be on this RDA, um, we're just funding, we're giving that five thousand to chalk it up or, or to, uh, Just a Break? Or are we giving it just to fund? The Chalk It Up activity?
So it, it is all expended for the activity. It is, it's not, it doesn't go to the actual organization. I mean, it does go through their organization, but their expenditures exceed the five thousand dollars. So, because oftentimes they're bringing in, uh, a world-renowned chalk artist to do a mural or they're paying for supplies and, or, you know. Anyway, so it's not, it's not going to any of their overhead from what I've seen.
So it's not necessarily just a five thousand dollar across-the-board donation to job, uh, to just a, just a, uh, just a?
Just a break, yeah. Yeah, it's going for the event.
It's going for the event. And John, you remind us once again, because I think it's important for everybody to, um, remember that this is not coming out of general fund. This is coming from, again, there's local.
Every taxing entity, uh, provides, uh, basically fifty percent of the, what they call the tax increment. But it's not this, it's not North Ogden City tax, however, it is property tax. And so it is property tax money that's, we're getting from all the other entities and in, in reality, us as well. So we dedicate a certain portion of our property tax for that. Those particular properties towards the RDA and the CDA funds. And so this is the, the RDA. Or this property is, or this area is an RDA project area.
And so it's basically just coming from the businesses. It's not necessarily coming from my, my, my or anybody else's property tax.
Yeah, it is only coming from those properties in the RDA, which the majority are commercial properties, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, so thank you for restating your question.
Well, I think it's just important for everybody to realize it's not coming out of my property tax or your property tax. It was set aside so that we could hopefully develop the southern end of the city and create a more welcoming environment and exposure to businesses and so forth, so, thank you.
Okay. And, and I think it's a good use of our RDA funds. I think it will naturally, uh, the end will naturally come as we program out those RDA funds. Um, towards the end of the years, we've been discussing planning that meeting. Any other, any other comments from Council? Look for a motion then to approve the funding for Chalk It Up North Ogden activities to the tune of five thousand dollars coming from the RDA fund. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve five thousand dollars to be contributed to the Chalk It Up event, uh, to the, what's it, Justin?
Just a break.
Just a break found, uh, organization.
Thank you, Councilmember Dowpas. Do we have a second?
Oh, I second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Severin. It's been moved and seconded. This is a voice vote, is that correct?
Yeah, you can just do voice.
Okay. Voice vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
That's right, you're abstaining, correct, thank you. Uh, any opposed? Okay, it passes three to zero. Good one. Recuse them. Council?
Mayor Proten?
Pardon?
Yes. Um, for the first time in my one-year experience in city council, I would like to ask for recess. Oh, I should have waited for you to do that. So I, I move that we take a five-minute break for restroom reasons.
At the, in the state legislature, it's called a move to saunter.
I would like, I would move, I move to saunter for five minutes.
Do we have a second? I second that. All of the in favor, say aye.
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 We have a five-minute saunter, thank you. Okay, I think we're back. So we're now moving on to item number seven, we'll be jumping back to item number seven. Discussion regarding budget relating to salaries, revenues, expenditures, et cetera. Council, for the sake of time, and, uh, because we're not quite there yet, we're not going to discuss expenditures tonight. We could be here for days discussing expenditures, so our finance director, uh, tag teaming with John Call. We're going to talk a little bit about salaries and revenues, so I'll turn the time over to Jamie Jones. Take it away, Jamie.
So, thank you, Council. Um, so we're here just to, to, like, like, Councilwoman Johnson said, revenues. I know that that's gonna be very difficult not to try to bring expenses, so if I like cut you off and say we're not talking about that, please don't. Um, I just want to recap the budget schedule. Um, so again, tonight we're just doing some budget highlights for the general fund. Um, next time we meet, we will talk about enterprise funds and admin, admins, the admin building, basically, which is uh, planning, um, administration, HR, uh, building inspections, finance, those things. And then parks and police for the twenty-fifth. May second is a work session just to kind of, um, finalize some budget priorities and some discussions. And then we do need to adopt the tentative, the tentative budget on May ninth. And that is a state requirement, um. And then June thirteenth is the approval of the final budget, um. So, just to recap there, and then we'll go to the next slide. So currently, right now, in the general fund revenues, um, there's approximately eleven point one million budgeted. For, um, just kind of for simplicity, simplicity, um, basically, we're holding everything constant, uh, regarding property taxes, but we do need to include some growth. Um, the forty thousand number, forty thousand dollar number, uh, last year, the growth was about eighty thousand and we're seeing, you know, about maybe half of that in growth or new growth coming into the city. That's completely just an estimate and we will not know that number until, um, until sometime in May when the county releases it.
And that growth comes from new homes that have been built that were not taxed last year.
Correct.
Correct, not a rise in property tax.
Correct, yes. Um, the sales tax is an estimate of four point seven million. I will get into more of that in a minute. Um, that is an increase from last year, um, of about four point two million. Uh, we are decreasing licenses and permits and these are, um, building permit numbers, so we are decreasing those revenues about a hundred thousand. Um, and then, uh, services. Excuse me, charges for services. Again, that has to do with like zoning and subdivision fees and planning check fees. We're reducing that about a hundred ninety-two thousand.
Before we move on, do we want to take a moment and talk about how, how we arrived at the sales tax projected?
I have a whole more slide on that, so I'm, I'm.
We will follow your lead.
Okay. Great. And, so again, this is just the breakdown of how we got to the two million three seventy-seven. Um, last year, we're holding, we're holding flat and then the growth, um. Not sure how to. Um, I was asked about, so in twenty twenty, we did a property tax increase about two hundred and twenty-three thousand, but we also refunded the three-dollar transportation fee, if, if you all remember, where it was about thirty-six thousand, or sorry, thirty-six dollars per household. Um, and I'm not sure how, how to say, but, but the idea was that it was dedicated to roads. And so I just want to make sure that I pointed that out, that, that, um, the two hundred and twenty-three thousand is there. I don't know if you have any other comments, John?
So the idea is that we are spending two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars out of the general fund on roads. But since that original transaction happened three years ago, the council has passed another resolution that says all of the property tax will be spent on police. And so I think it was just clarifying that it's not like there's not money still being spent on roads. It's just, it's it's not, I mean, the hard part is property tax and sales tax get thrown into the same bucket and shaken up. Um, but we are still spending more on B, more than we receive on B and C road funds into streets and roads.
I think it's also a reflection that when we implemented that, that, uh, transportation utility fee that we were making it clear to residents that the money gathered under that fee was only going to go to roads and to no other, it wouldn't be used to supplement other property tax, uh, uh, other general fund things. It was only for roads. And once it went away and we stopped collecting that, um, then, then we made the, the new earmark where all property taxes went to police. Because we were no longer collecting that specific fee that we then made sure we specifically earmarked for roads only. Does that make sense?
Right. So this is where we are currently with sales tax for this fiscal year twenty-three. Our budget number is four point two million. We're, we are currently nine point two four percent higher than projected, or about quarter of a million dollars. And when we annualize that, that number comes out to be about four point five million. Um, I think you've all seen this chart, chart in the past. Um, it's kind of hard to see. Uh, the red line is where we are for this fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The green line is the budget, so you can see that, that's definitely higher. And then fiscal year twenty-two is in purple. So we're following the trend per se is, as the line moves, but at about nine, nine, nine percent higher, so it's. Um, so this is where, there we are.
Do you mind if I dim the lights?
No, that's great.
I'm asleep.
Well, I, I might, but I, I'll try not to.
Well, there's this rumor going around that I have an algorithm.
We've heard about it.
Heard about it.
Heard about it.
Right, so, the league put out So the league put out a 1% local sales tax calculation years ago. I stumbled upon it and always just kind of wanted to plug it in. And so. So, so I've used it, I, I began using it last year. And then so I've been following it for about eight quarters now. And so I just want to give a quick rundown about how sales tax works for our city. So this is for January 2023, and this is how the tax commission calculates sales tax and sends it to the city. And stop me if I say something wrong or need to move on. So, so in January 2023, the tax commission received $202,000 in the 1% local sales tax. So that is the sales tax that was generated in North Ogden City that was sent to the tax commission. Automatic 50% of that comes to the city, so the city received 101,000. The other 50% goes into what they call a population pot. And so this happens for all of the, for all of the taxing entities. It goes into this population pot, and then that is distributed based on the city population. So the city population is 21,528, according to the tax commission. And when we divide that by the whole state of Utah, 3.3 million, our factor is the .0064. So in January, the whole state of Utah generated 70, almost 75 million dollars. And so our portion of that with the factor is the 241,000. So you've probably heard in the past how, how the mayor's talked about how we, we generate as a state two-thirds of city and sales tax, and then a third is North Ogden generated. So the total for January was the, the 341,000. Just to give you a little bit of like, I don't know, so December, the pot was 91 million. So that is how volatile sales tax is for the city. And it's very hard to like, to zone in on a number. I mean, there's just, there's just no way of knowing, right? Because it's not just North Ogden City, it's a state. Okay, yes.
Quick question, unless if you don't want discussion yet. The resident, the population number for North Ogden, they only update that every 10 years with the census, or is that correct?
No, they, so like last year, it was like 20,000. They do update it yearly. I don't know how they updated that, and that's a great question.
Okay.
So I'm trying to understand, there were 74 million, almost 75 million in the pot. With that .0064 and the amount of population we have, we ended up with 241,330. Thank you.
For that 50%.
In addition to the 101,000, it was our automatic 50%, correct?
So, and a good example is Riverdale has a very low population, but a very high tax, sales tax base. And so their 50% that they get automatically would be much higher than the population. Because their population number, let's just call it $5,000 for simplicity, would be less than a quarter of what we get. So they would get $60,000-ish from sales tax from the pot. But the local option, they probably get, I don't know, call it 500,000. I mean, I'm totally picking a number every year. But so every city's different, but they, they do the 50/50 because they know that our residents shop in Riverdale and Salt Lake. And so it helps, it helps share the sales tax with the population centers. So you don't end up with a spot like Plain City that gets the money from Maverick and that's it. So.
Okay, so I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Extr.
So that 241,330, how is that calculated?
So we take that factor of the .0064.
Okay.
Finds that by the 74 million.
Yeah, I, I get something different when I multiply those out. 0, 0, let me see, .0064 multiplied by 74, 9. And I have to do this, of course, on a calculator. I cannot do it in my head. I get 479,457.
Maybe missing a zero.
Okay, .0064. Okay, multiplied by 74915302. Okay, yeah, I still get 479,000. So that's why I'm just wondering, is that, am I missing a zero? Or maybe you're missing a zero, or maybe it's only half of that. I don't know.
It might be missing a zero, might be three zeros.
Three zeros? Okay. 00064 times 74915302. Nope, that's significantly less. That's only $48,000.
Yeah.
Anyway, there's some math that we work out there, but anyway.
Well, I have the breakdown sheet the state sends me, so.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to check my math because I have a calculator. Normally, I just accept the numbers, but I thought, oh, I'm going to check it this time.
I appreciate that.
I, I think, and I'm, I'm just thinking here because I'm not an accountant. But I think since 50% of the pot goes to the city, the .0064 is multiplied times half of the total sales tax.
That makes more sense.
Because half of it has already been given out to the cities.
That makes sense, yes.
So that, this.
I'm missing the divide by 2, I guess, on the 75 million.
Yep. If you do that, then you.
That's, that's.
I, I love it. It's great.
Everyone's going, di, 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 di.
I did it.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Yeah, so if that's how much is, is in the total sales tax pot? And then is, you know, half of it is distribut, distributed according to population, that, that's closer. Yeah. Okay, very good.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Very good to go. We get what we get. It's kind of just fun to figure it out, but it really is like the state says, here's what you're going to get. And, you know, we can, we can calculate it out so we understand that, we can kind of understand the reasoning behind it. But it really is determined by Big Brother, the state, of how much they're going to decide to give us, so.
Good, Jamie, continue.
Right, so part of this self-sex calculator, the question was given is what drives the growth in this, in these distributions? One is the, the state level, and then one is at the county level. And these are the economic factors that, that the ULCT drilled down to that really affected sales tax numbers. And at the state level, it's, it's the percent change in Utah wages, percent change in residential building permits and, and new building permits. And then the percent change in population between the city and state. And at the county level, they take in those same factors, but they also include the percent change in the CPI and then the unemployment rate. And then based on the city, you also factor in industry. So like Moat would factor in their tourism income and then, or, or if they have like an auto mall or something like that. So if they're really industry heavy within their cities. And so these are the economic factors that are included into this, this algorithm that, that they created. So trying to keep this as simple. So what I did, so I started this last, last January, and I went back looking through fiscal 19 and was looking at what we did actuals and then plugging in these numbers. And without going through every single column, so obviously, the first column for the formula is plugging in the numbers. The second column is what we budgeted, the third column is what we actually received for the year. And so the difference with the formula. If we were, if we were to have used the formula for those first three years, we would have come in 1.2 million closer in our budgets for those three years than what we actually did of the, of the 1.8 million. So the difference with the formula, we would have had an average of 190,000 for fiscal year 20, but we actually came in almost $300,000 higher. So the whole point of me, of me trying to utilize this is because in the past, the way that sales tax was generated was, let's just look at what we've done for the average for the last five years and make a go of it. That's great. That's a big number. Let's plug that in. It's a great number. Also, the fact that we're trying to match expenses with revenues, and it should be revenues first. So this is trying, really is trying to close the gap between what we're receiving or what we're estimating and what we're actually receiving. This is, this is really all it is. It's not to really project what we're getting. It's just trying to close that gap. And I think that it's significant that that 1.2 million dollar difference is huge. So a lot of different decisions could, could be made. So that's the, the real, the real point of this. When I generated the 4.7 million going into the fiscal year 2024 budget, I was looking at the, the formula was spitting out a $5 million number, and that was based on third quarter reports. And I just updated this yesterday. And then the formula is now spitting out the 4.7 million. If that's a comfortable number, you know, we'll see, but that is what I plugged into the budget. If we were to move forward and use the CPI number, as you see on the bottom, depending on what number we want to use to apply the CPI number alone, if we're going to use what is projected for the end of fiscal year 23, earlier I said, analyze, we're looking at a 4.5 million. We add CPI of 6% to that, we are still arrive at that 4.7 million. If we use what we received in fiscal year 22, then it's that 4.5 number again. So it's this, what, where, where is the comfort level? Does that, does that make sense?
Absolutely. And counsel, one of the, one of the things that intrigued me about this, and I'm sorry if I miscreated a, a mis, a mislabeling that it was your algorithm, you know, that you got it from somewhere else.
Oh, yeah.
One of the difficulties, probably one of the more difficult discussions we've had as a council for the entire time I've been on council and as we've been together as council is this sales tax figure. Because it's always been just kind of a. Yeah, it feels like, and, and if you go back and look at some of the discussions we had in the past, you have one individual saying, well, I feel like it's going to be X number of dollars. And then every individual has a different feel because we really didn't have anything that relied on data that we pulled to try to crunch into something that would spit out an estimation. And let's be clear that whether we use the, the, I mean, the CPI way at the bottom there is an estimation, right? We're using some kind of little formula that we really kind of came up with last year, right? Last couple of years that we talked about having a sales tax and then looking at some kind of, at what inflation is doing and trying to guess, emphasizing the word guess on where we're going with sales tax revenue. What intrigued me about the, the formulary, the algorithm, whatever you want to call it, is that it pulled so many different types of data points, right? There's, there's, there's employment rates, there's wages increase or dis, decrease, all these factors that as Jamie applied them to years past, in none of those applications did it overestimate what we actually, what we actually collected. But it came closer to accurately predicting what we did collect. And as we're at the front end of a budget and we're looking at what can we or can't we do without raising property taxes and those kinds of things. I think the closer, any method that gets us closer to what we'll, what we can reliably count on as our actual number better informs us and prepares us to make a good budget decision. Does that make sense? That's what's kind of playing in my head. And so I hope each of you have taken the opportunity to meet with Jamie and to ask your, your individual questions. Tonight isn't the time to have the debate as to which method we use. You need to be aware of those methods and be thinking because as we get to the tentative budget in May, part of that tentative budget, a huge component of that tentative budget is making a projection as to revenues. We're, we're making the assumption that property tax will be flat, that we will take the, the recommended, what's the certified rate from the county that's handed down to us? That, again, for those that don't make, may not understand it. If, if North Ogden City has 100 houses that produces $100 in, in property taxes, as your home value goes up, the state and county automatically reduce, they force us to reduce property tax rate so that those 100 houses only produce $100 in property tax. That's just state law. The only way that we can, those 100 houses can produce more property taxes if we have a truth and taxation hearing like we did last year and the year before. And actually, and actually get, approve a higher rate than what the state and county are telling us we have to have. So what we're saying at this point in the budget process is that property tax rate, we will, we're looking at accepting the certified rate that comes from the state and county. So our property taxes will, other than the 40,000 in growth, will not be any larger. Okay? And so then now we look at the other major component, property taxes is 2. something million dollars. Sales taxes is $5 million, right? That's a huge, the major portion of our city operates on sales taxes. And so accurately predicting what we're going to get in sales tax, the closer we can get, the better we can budget. So please take the time to delve into these two methodologies. Talk to the mayor, talk to Jamie, talk to me. And we've all got our opinions on what the best way is. And then as a council, before we come to our, is it May 9th? May 9th, when we have to pass the tentative budget, we need to have made a decision by that point on this sales tax. What's the methodology that we're going to use to estimate that number? Okay? And so that's kind of the homework to take away from this for tonight is to be working really hard and thinking about what's the methodology that we're going to use in that revenue side of the budget. Okay, yes, Councilmember Sherr.
Well, I think this is amazing. So in the past, what we're saying is that we've only used the CBI and not used this algorithm.
We haven't even used CPI in the past.
Last couple of year, or last year.
Last year was the first year that we kind of said before that, it literally was, well, we got 4.2 this year. The economy feels good. Should we?
And inflation was at 7%.
And inflation was at 7%. And so we shook our crystal balls that mine's still cloudy. And I would say, I think I'm good going 5.5% up in sales tax this year. And, you know, back in Mayor Taylor days, Mayor Taylor would say, well, I'm good with 7%. And then our finance director would say, well, but my gut says 6.25. And none of it was based on any kind of formula. It was just all gut feel. And it, it served us okay. I think we got lucky, really. There were some years where the, some consensus from our finance director and others was we ought to be lower. But there were projects that we needed to try to fund, and so we would estimate higher. And then we ended up coming in above that, so none of us had any clue how to really come to that number. It was a total guess until last year, really was the first year ever that we've used some kind of formula.
So just for clarity then, for me and maybe for others, what we're trying to look at here is, do we look at the CBI or do we follow this? Do we look at the CPI or do we follow this? This algorithm.
And I, and, and so that's, that's the whole point, right? That's, that's the whole point is that there isn't there. You could do either one or, or something in between. There isn't. We don't know, but it's. It's numbers fact, right? So.
Either is better than what we've been doing.
So, but my point just simply is, it seems like. This formula that has not been being used in the city. Seems to be pretty darn accurate in.
Seems to be in.
But it's more accurate than the CPI.
In the way of estimations, yes.
Well, things have a tendency to get a little statistically.
Yeah.
Sure. There's a CPI for a reason, right? I mean, that's a.
Right.
A great, you know.
Before you comment, council member doubt this, council asked me to look at this formulary. And it's, it's kind of like being in court when a lawyer asks a question that's inappropriate and. Put something in a juror's mind and the judge says, strike that from your mind. Right, John? It's really effective, right? And attorneys never ask inappropriate questions that get objected to and sustained. Because it then plants a seed in the mind of the juror, right? That never happens.
Never ever.
Never ever. I was listening to the Gwyneth Paltrow case today. It, it wasn't happening at all. Yeah, no. Anyway. We are not looking at a formulary to try to find a way to get more money into the budget. That is not what we're doing. Okay? So please don't look at it as, well, if we go this way, then there's this project that we could do. Please don't look at it that way. That's not what we're trying to do. What Jamie's trying to accomplish is our finance director and what I'm hoping to accomplish as the financial liaison. Is to find a methodology. That gets us accurate predictions as close as we possibly can that we can. Put our heads on the pillow at night and go, okay, at least we have nine or 10 data points. That are being pulled from sources other than our own guts. That inform what the, it spits out. Does that make sense?
I think that's awesome.
I just wanted that to be clear that we're not trying to find revenue to spend. We're trying to find accurate numbers so that we can be accurate in our budgeting.
Well, I think the citizens would appreciate that.
And it, and you know, quite frankly, if we can be more accurate and it means we don't have to raise up property taxes, why wouldn't we do that? That's my feeling. Um, council member doubt best.
All right. First of all, this will still be Jamie's algorithm in my book. Um, but yeah, we understand the explanation behind it. Second of all. Comparing the CPI estimate versus the algorithm estimate. We're not very far off as of now. We only have a fifty thousand dollar delta between those two choices. And, and, but that's going down the road of, well, if we get, if we do this or that, it gets impressed more money. But what I'm trying to point out is. At least for this year. This would be a year that you could feel very comfortable to take the leap into this algorithm potentially because. It's just not very far off what, from what CPI would have been anyways. Um, furthermore, going back three years is very powerful to illustrate. That it was much closer, um, than our estimate for the budget in, in my opinion. So. I, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's awesome.
Is council member extra, anything you else you'd like to add? She's got her hand up. Okay, yes. Council member extra.
Yes. No, this is, this is fantastic. We are very, very careful about our expenditure estimates, right? We, I mean, we, we have all of our, uh, department heads. Getting bids and, and you know, really trying to make their budgetary expenditures. Really as accurate as we can. At the end of the day, a budget still is just an estimation. It's not, you know, this is the, the best we can do. And I think on revenues. We could definitely do better. And I think Jamie is showing that this is definitely a, a better way to estimate, estimate. In which case then we can match up revenues and expenditures much more accurately. So, you know, in looking through all of the factors that are, are taken into consideration in estimating revenues. I think it's just, it's, you know, with the, what, four year track record that she's shown here, it's a better tool. To estimate. And so I, I, um, I, I would love to see us use the algorithm. Um, which is taking into consideration all of these particular factors as opposed to just one. That's, you know, more data points is always better. Um. To a certain extent, of course, there's law of diminishing returns, but you know, I think this takes in the bulk of it. You've got the majority of the bell curve. That is going to be in, uh, this calculation and which case. That's going to make it so that we're not just saying, oh, well, when. You know, we, we tend to try to overestimate expenses and underestimate. Um, revenues and, you know, and that's great as a, just a conservative kind of. Um, philosophy, I suppose, but it's better to just be accurate, you know, um. So I really, I really like this. Thank you, Jamie, for. Getting into playing with the numbers and putting them in and doing this, you know, backwards calculations on previous years so that we could see that. Um, so, yeah, I, I really like this approach. So I think that's, that's just going to be helpful in trying to get an accurate budget. Picture. Cause at the end, you know, everybody fusses over the budget, which is really funny. Because they don't ever fuss about what actually happened. You know what I mean? We, we have like, oh, they get upset about the budget, but then it's like, does anybody actually go back and see what we actually did? To see that we, we spent less than what we budgeted and things like that. So anyway, I would like the budget to be more accurate because that tends to be what people are looking at is the budget and not the actual, so.
Thank you, council member extra. Okay. So counsel, I would just ask that, you know, over the next couple of weeks, we've got April 11th is our next budget meeting, correct? That, uh, you come with a preliminary. Decision on the methodology on the sales tax base, uh, do your homework between now and then. And, uh, let's be prepared on the 11th to make a preliminary decision on that. Chair, council member, uh, doubt best.
Yeah, one last question. Uh, it seems like recently. You saw the amount go from an, uh, estimate of five million to four point seven seven. So each year. Is there a, is there a time that you would feel most comfortable to go in and make that? That estimate with the algorithm? I, I, because that seems like a, that's just a question I have.
So my goal is I want to review this quarterly and. Act appropriately. Like, like if we have to do like budget amendments and, you know, have a discussion. I want to be able to get to that where it's a live document, right? It's not just we look at it beginning of the year, come back with some amendments. Or not, and then, you know, move to the next year. So. That's just my goal is, is, and, and you know, I, I do send out that monthly report. Um, on, on the sales tax out to the council. And so maybe this could be a part of it on a quarterly basis. That kind of.
Okay. I think it would be a good addition to what the audit committee reviews on a quarterly basis and. As Jamie just said, informs council on a quarterly basis where we're headed. The algorithm might be a real, you know, canary in a coal mine telling us the guys with all the things that are going on. We still feel comfortable. But it's telling us we need to, we need to scale back somewhere because all the indicators are telling us there's a downturn. Uh, conversely. The indicators are saying there's an upturn. Well, that doesn't mean we need to go spend more, but it means we might have more that we can carry over in the next year. Into a capital improvement, put into roads or whatever, those kinds of things. But I, I think that canary in a coal mine, it can be. We'll see. Take that leap of faith and see what happens.
What I like about it is the. Uh, unemployment is a factor in it. So like you think about it, if, if you have a higher number of people that are unemployed in your. Community, those people are tightened down a little. They're not going to be spending as much at the grocery store or anywhere, uh, around. So. It's just, it's a very realistic way to say, okay, this is something that's factored into it. It's really cool.
And wages if they're increasing or decreasing. Okay. We could spend all night on this. Jamie, go ahead. Thank you.
Uh, the next topic would be, um, is salary.
Okay. What about salaries?
I think we've exchanged. So, um, uh, initial indications, we don't have firm numbers, partly because we don't want to get anyone hopes up, any hopes up or anything. Um, but the initial indications are that with the work the council's done over the past years, we're. Mostly caught up, meaning that the gaps between where people are and where they were. And where they should be are much smaller. Which is a good thing. Um, it means that moving forward, we shouldn't see dramatic mid-year bumps and. Annual bumps. Um, but I think we are going to talk to the council a little bit about philosophy there. Um, because it's kind of a guessing game. On what the market's going to do, because everybody that's in the municipal jurisdiction moves their numbers Jan- July first. Which is when we move them. And so we need to make sure that that prediction is close to the others. So that we don't end up behind again. Uh, one thing we do do with that mid-year adjustment is we allow ourselves to catch ourselves up at that six months. Which is how we've been able to close that gap. Um, but everything across the board that we're seeing. Um, is not, has not increased in the past six months in the way it had in the previous six month segments over the past. You know, thirty months that we've been working on this program. So. Um, and we did with the citizens budget committee go through and show the system, show how we calculated it. And how we're doing that, but in general, I'm pretty optimistic that, um, the. The raises that we're looking at on the annual basis. Um, are going to be, uh, it's not a lot of catch up to do. We're, we're now are going to just be keeping up with the market, which is good. Anything else that I should say, Jamie?
Excellent. Counsel, that comes from, you know, basically three years of hard work. Following a lot of Mayor Berube's leadership and guides and his, you know, expertise and, uh. Wages and those kinds of things and, um, attract and retain policies for our employees. Uh, that we've. We've gotten to a good place compared to where we were. You know, eight years ago when Mayor Berube, at that time Citizen Berube. chaired a, a compensation committee along with Thane Schaefer and a couple other people. Been excellent work. Okay. Anything else, Jamie? John, anything? Nope. Okay. Counsel, any questions? That you have for Jamie or John on, uh, what we've just gone over. Council member extra, anything from you?
No, just, uh, thank you, Jamie, for. Digging into that. That was, that was great initiative. I appreciate any, all of the things that you're doing to help. Make the budget more understandable, make it more accurate, make our, um, estimations better. You put in a lot of work and, um, a lot of education, a lot of skill that you've developed. In order to ma- you know, help us make better decisions and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Jamie. And, and also thank you to the league. You know, and, uh, sometimes you can wonder why do we belong to the league and what does the league really give us? It's these kinds of things that. The league has, uh, industry experts, industry experts, governmental experts, accounting experts, attorneys and such. That spend all day, every day delving into these things, helping cities and towns be. Better. Uh, it, it really is a pooling of resources with our membership. Um, to give us those kinds of things that the big cities that have hundreds of millions of dollars of budget. That they can afford to hire somebody to do internally. It really gives us great resources that we wouldn't otherwise have access to. Okay, moving on then to item number eleven. Road closure update at one hundred east and forty fifty north. Mr. David Espinoza, Public Works Director.
Well, if we didn't receive, uh, twenty inches of snow, I could probably give a better explanation, but, uh. What's going on up there actually right now is the subbase underneath the asphalt. There's moisture in it. There's, there's either a spring that's came down. Um, it's either following piping, um. Uh, so what it is, is where the new tie-in from Northview Phase Seven. Is tied into the existing, what we had, we have there. Um, is for some reason where that, where that's meeting, it's just, we're, we're having a subgrade issue. Um, we've had a, uh, Los X engineers come out and. And, uh. And survey that whole, that whole intersection. Cause that's the thing about, once you start tearing up an intersection, the state has expectations that you. You do the whole. Intersection. And so what we're doing now is we got the whole thing surveyed. So that we can put drain pipes in there. We can take the water out of that intersection. Uh, put it into our stormwater system where it needs to go, um, so that we can pull out that subgr- you know, that subbase. Redo that whole intersection and then reasphalt. Um, the reason why it shut down is, is just for our citizen's safety. We're having a lot of people trying to move barricades and things because they want to cut across and, you know, it's just a little shorter home that way. You know, we, we really like to, you know, ask our citizens, it's like. You know, those barricades are there for a reason and it's, it's just for their safety that it's very soft. I mean, you can go walk on it and you can feel it underneath your feet. So. Having a vehicle go through there is.
But you don't recommend that.
I, I wouldn't. So, so we, um, that's kind of where we're at right now. Like I said, I wish if, if this storm wouldn't have came in, I think we would have been able to at least. Trench and, and have an idea of like. Hey, is, is the water actually surfacing right there or is it just following some of our piping? Um. But with all the moisture and with the snow that we've had, I mean, most of our, our crews have been snow lining and so. We haven't been able to go in there and actually dig it out and, and give ourselves an idea of exactly where that water's coming from. Um, there was some questions like, okay, is it the new subdivision causing this? Um, the one thing that we can say is. Um, there's some alligator in there already from the, that's existing. So. We've probably had some moisture under there, um. But with all this, with all this snowpack and, and with the, the runoff that we're having, I think it's just, it's even, it's way more. And so. Um, there were some of those questions like that. But as far as the new subdivision, we are working with them very closely on making sure that they're putting it. You know, they've put in extra drainage ditches. We're getting the water to the storm, you know, to our storm drain system. They've now put in. I think two additional dishes. Above the, uh, the subdivision there, uh, Northview Phase Seven, they've actually went up above it. Um, we've actually had a drone go flying and there, you, you should see waters just coming out of the ground. And, and some places there. And so they're, they're capturing that water. We're getting it into the storm drain system now. Um, but yeah, there's just a lot of water up there in that, in that area. So.
So no estimated date at this point. It's all going to be weather dependent and water flow.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're seeing some moisture in the next ten days forecast too. So, but we, we do have the survey, um. Stuff. And so we'll be able to start digging that up and figuring out, okay, this is where we're going to put the drain. These is, this is where we're going to tie the, tie it into the storm drain system. Um, so we'll be able to move on that quickly. It's just a matter of actually getting up there and doing the, the actual work.
And not that I went out and walked on it, but it is very spunky.
Yes, it really is.
I was amazed. Not that I walked.
Anything else?
Just thank you for sticking with us and giving that update. I really appreciate it. I, it was one of my requests and. The, the level of detail and information that you gave us is just very helpful for me to understand better what's happened there. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, David. Okay, item number twelve, uh, council department reports. Uh, I'm gonna exercise privilege and since we already talked so much about finance tonight, I'm gonna skip that one. Um, we, you saw the sales tax numbers and we remember that. So. Council member Barker is not here. Hope that everything's going well with him over at the fire department. Uh, David, would you like to give us a report on parks and recreation? Since you raised your hand and said, would you like me to?
Yeah. So we've had, uh, there was a couple of things I passed on to Councilman Parker. Um, first you might have seen over at bicentennial park, um, we've had. A construction company donate their, their time to the city, um. a construction company donate their, their time to the city, um, with no cost to the city, um, to dig. Some of that, you'd seen where it undercut the, the stream, it actually undercut the, the bed or the sides there. And so they're gonna come in, they're gonna dig that back. We um, have provided big boulders and, and rocks for them to actually put in place, so that this, so it doesn't erode again like that.
Who's the company?
Uh, so it's Regency that's doing it. Eric's doing the work. So Eric Thomas is the one that actually donated his time.
That they're willing to do that.
Yes. And then there was one other one that I had. I can't remember what it is now. Oh, that we, we did get the, we, and we talked about it a little bit, but Wadman Park. So the brown stuff got, got ordered and the colors got picked and so we're getting, we're really excited to get moving on that and, and the same way with the trailhead, um. We've been, we've been meeting on the trailhead. We got all that surveyed and we're gonna get moving on that quickly too. I think both of those things will be done definitely before, you know, um, middle of June. Of course, why I think comes up.
That's awesome. Thank you, David.
Yep.
Councilmember Dalgas Building and Planning.
Sure thing. Okay, so uh, thanks to Scott and Colleen for collecting some numbers for me uh, yesterday and today. I really appreciate it. So just giving you some numbers on the billing permits uh, so far this budget year. We are at two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars of our five hundred thousand that is budgeted for this fiscal year. Um, so you can see that we're a little bit behind on what we would like to see with building permits. We are at eighty-one thousand dollars of three hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted this fiscal year for plan check fees. Um, just to note, we do have some anticipated projects that are very close to going through the plan check process and uh, doing their billing permits. And it's estimated that our billing permits will have uh, approximately a hundred thousand dollars extra within about a month. And it's also estimated that our plan check fees will go up by about thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, one last thing to note about the numbers that I gave there uh, is that it's not fully considering everything from March, since we're not all the way through March. It's just up until pretty much today's date that we were able to get. So it, at least hopefully it gives the residents and the council an idea of, of where we're trending uh, on those things. Uh, also, just some projects that are of note uh, at Village at Prominence Point. The clubhouse uh, permit has been issued and footings have been put in. So that's a huge step in the right direction for that community there. Uh, also Phase One apartments are in plan review right now, and there are five buildings that are um, in, in the beginning process of, of starting down the road. As far as uh, Petri at Point Townhomes go, we continue to see additional phases that are developing. Uh, wanted to note that the police station, uh, one of our building inspectors, Nate Davis, is basically acting as the project manager for the police department. So hats off to him for taking on that additional responsibility. We really appreciate that, and he's doing a good job keeping things trending in the right direction with that project. So let's see, last thing is, last couple things is uh, the city is now working through a general plan uh, text updates that are going through the planning commission right now. Uh, we do have our active transportation plan project that is set to kickoff in April. And last but not least, we did get the South Town Center uh, scope finalized. So we have the consultant all figured out and selected. Um, the signatures and contracts are approved and everything. And so the kickoff for that South Ten, uh, South Town uh, study will happen in April.
Wonderful, exciting news. Okay, and now to the best part of the night. Ready?
I'm ready.
Set. It's time for public comments again. Please remember to keep, uh, tell us who you are, what city you reside in, and keep it to five minutes or less.
Does my five minutes start over, because it's some public comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm gonna talk fast.
You've got a new five.
A bucket full.
Oh, cool boy.
Um, first of all, I wanna thank Scott Hess for explaining what alligatoring is, because I thought maybe we were having some alligator problems in our city. Um, budget, thank Jamie for her explanation tonight. That just was um, very helpful. I really appreciated that. The only suggestion that I have for buzz, budget is not planning so close. I would rather see us have an excess of revenue than an excess of expenses. I understand with that we want it to be closer, but I don't know, I think it's nice to have a little bit of um.
Cushion.
Yes, thank you. That is the good word. Chuck it up. I'm having a really hard time with chucking up. About the same time that started, my son came to the mayor at the time with an idea for a fundraiser that he would like to involve the city in advertising. He was told absolutely not. The city does not do that. And yet the city has um, provided space and money for chuck it up ever since then. So that I have a, uh, I, I'm not debating that it's a good thing. It is, but so, so was what my son wanted to do. And he was told that it would not even be considered with the council. Um, the mayor said just absolutely not. So that's kind of my issue with that. I, I don't think it's right that the city has picked one thing and told everything else. No, as far as giving that amount of money to. Number eight, darn it, I did not come prepared. Um, I was I guess more concerned about some other things. I do not agree with passing that at all whatsoever. I have two acres, three acres, depending on if you talk to the city or the county. I pay taxes on every one of those acres. Um, I, in fact, I brought this up before. There was a vital path that went along the side of my property. And for some reason, the, the small homes on the other side was given that whole access to that. I was not given the right to, to split that with them. Um, I don't know how that was done, if they, if that's added property to them, they, if they pay their taxes on that. I think to allow these people, especially when you're talking about six acres, and you're going to let them lease that for ten dollars and put either their cows on it or grow their alfalfa on it. Because I don't live next door to city property, I don't have that option. I think it's very, I think, I think that this is very unfair. So if they, a- a- and if they put up a fence, then it is no longer city property. It is their property. They're the only ones that have access to it. Um, if you're allowing these people to beautify city property, does that mean I can go have a picnic on that city property? Or, or not, because you leased it to them. I just don't like that idea at all. I feel like they're giving free property without having to pay their property taxes on it. And me, and I would think the majority of the citizens in North Ogden do not have that same right. I don't think it's her. Did I tell you who I am and where I, you know, okay, that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else here? Jump now. There you go.
Three things. I agree with Harley Brenda said. That's number one. Number two, oh, excuse me, I'm Doug Anderson, living in North Ogden.
There you go.
What I agree with what Brenda said. Number two. I have a suggestion for the council to consider with regarding, with regard to the methods of arriving at the estimations for revenues that Jamie was talking about. That we use the CPI. Now that stands for Concerned Price Index, am I correct? But that method was an improvement over the gut feel method, right? That had been used for years. So we had one improvement. This other formula would be another type of improvement. Maybe consider a hybrid of the two that looked like from the chart, if I understood it right, that the two numbers were kind of close regardless of the CPI method or the formula there. So maybe just put both of them there and then put those two numbers side by side and use a little judgment. At that point, now you've got the data-based estimates. You've got both of them, using both and use a little judgment and go toward the cushion side, if you will. That's what I would do if I were sitting in your chair. Just a suggestion, of course. And my number three thing is I'm up for like twelve, I went to the email about, please, please address that at this time. Thank you.
Chris Paul over North Ogden, um, just two things, um, well, three potholes, potholes, potholes. Um, I know they're working hard on it. It's um, especially Fruitland Drive is just horrendous. I mean, you know, I watched uh, the brother-in-law almost lose a trailer because he, you know, hit it and almost dropped an axle, but so sooner the better on that. I know they're trying to fix it, but at the same time, just dumping asphalt into holes sometimes helps too. Um, and then just two seconds on the internet, um, and the Utah leak, city leak, anyway. Yeah, so I mean, just briefly looking at it, there's, I mean, I think Salt Lake has a ore equation method for finding sales tax revenue future estimates. So it's stuff out there, and I think that's kind of what you're using, sort of, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, there's so many. The GFOA has their own. There's so many to go around and run them.
Yeah, and, and the, the US government has different ways of predicting things as well, and I think it, Jamie's smart enough. I mean, they honestly, something is nothing spectacular, but um, and then the other thing is, is a bunch of committee members are gonna shoot me, but um, I don't like being a snitch, but I think the mayor said it the other time about code enforcement. I think that's one of the things that um, Scott and I have talked about too, is that if we have code and we don't enforce it, then why is it there? Uh, brief examples, uh, not clearing sidewalks, uh, snow blowing into the street. All these things, I, you know, I actively pulled the trigger on one of those. I don't like being a snitch, but at the same time, you know, anyway, I, to me, if we don't have enough code enforcement people to monitor with the code we have, we reduce or increase one or the other done. Come down to a happy meeting. Just a thought. Anyway, um, I think that was it. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. We only have two other members of the public here that had a comment. This I'm looking to see Kevin's legs are outstretched, so I'll see him jump.
Sandy.
His jungle looks very comfortable. John, anybody online?
No. Oh, yes. Uh, Susan Kilborn.
Jane, Susan Kilborn. Can we hear you?
You can hear me.
There you are.
To. No, I'm just kidding. Hi. I've been.
Raymond, where are you at, please?
Susan Marie Anne Schwidler Hamblerlin Kilborn. Thirty-three seventy north, four hundred east, North Ogden, Utah. Eight four four one four dash one five seven four, okay?
Can you give us the GPS coordinates, please?
Uh, I probably can, but some of you may not understand that. Okay. First of all, I have three questions. Um, who is responsible for removing the snow around fire hydrants?
I believe that is uh, uh, we expect the residents living near the fire hydrants to do that. We simply don't have the manpower or man-hours to, how, how many hydrants do we have in the city, David?
Uh, over nine hundred.
They have over nine hundred hydrants, so you can imagine how many man-hours, person-hours that would take. It would we could basically either plow the streets or we could clear the hydrants, and we choose to plow the streets.
Right. And I appreciate that, and I'll put a plug in for Public Works yet once again, because they are so awesome. Cannot, cannot say it enough. Okay, then I'm gonna go down and kick some tail on some neighbors of mine. Okay, second question. Have we decided um, for the Fourth of July celebration, when the fireworks are gonna be? I am planning a family reunion and holy hell, people. You're gonna have my family raining in during that time, and they're wondering when the fireworks are gonna be. Do we have an answer? And I see your face, Delpius.
It'll be on July eighth.
Okay. Well, I don't agree with that, but that's neither here nor there. Um, one more question. Is there in North Ogden City an official Facebook page?
Yes, it is the one North Ogden Facebook page.
And that was my assumption. I have a question for whoever is governing that as to why I cannot make a comment on there.
I, I'm not sure why it was set up that way. I don't remember council deciding that, but uh, we can have that conversation.
Okay, I wanna have that conversation, because I am someone who always posts, not only on my page, but other page, when city council meetings are gonna be. I tried to do that more than once on Facebook One, North Ogden City Facebook One. And I had to dovetail it today on a comment that was made in twenty twenty-two. So I just wanna clarify, I'm trying to do my civic duty in getting people besides me coming on here and harassing you guys and praising you guys and um, having a problem doing it on that page. Okay, that's official Susan. Now dismissed, changing face. Phil? Because the meeting went so long tonight, I was able, as a multitasking woman, to conduct a survey on the appropriateness of the length of your hair. And I thought I would share that with you. We had a vote. Not um, surprisingly, most women voted, not men. And most of the women in North Ogden would like to see your hair fast and free and flowing like your personality. So you look, you look stellar. Just wanted to tell you that.
Duly noted.
Duly noted. Duly noted. Now, I have one more request. Whoever.
Eighteen seconds.
I'm, I can do it. Whoever requested all this snow in their prayers, please resend your order. I'm done.
There you go. Your time is up. Thank you, Susan. Anyone else online, John?
No.
Okay. Last chance here.
You're gonna take the last part of my five minutes?
Maybe. You can make it very quick.
I didn't hear anything about flood uh.
We haven't gotten the mayor, council, and staff comments yet. You, you will address it later or?
Yes.
Someone else? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Okay, that's the end of public comments for the night. Now we'll get to mayor, council, and staff comments. I'm gonna take a little prerogative here and ask David to come back up and answer the question about flooding and any mitigation that we are taking place across that uh, we are doing as a city.
Um, so there's a few things we're doing. Um, we're definitely making sure all of the the catch basins are as available as we can make them. Uh, we have all, the whole crew go out and, and check those. Um, and then the big part from the city side is just making sure all the drainage ditches and easements are, are flowing freely. Um, those are the ones that we can definitely take care of. Um, from the citizen's side of it, we do have sandbags available over at Public Works, um, twenty sandbags per citizen. Um, all you have to do is show your ID. We'll mark you down. Um, they can, you know, they can pick up bags uh, at no cost. Uh, we have a uh, good amount of sandbags over there available. We have a good amount of sandbags over there available for them to fill up and, and, and take to their homes to protect themselves.
Per citizen or per home?
Per citizen. Well, per home, right now, yeah. If we do find, or if we know that you are in a flooding event or if you're near one of our creeks or some, something like that, those numbers are going up, like we're, we're giving more bags. But right now, you know, if you, if you do the math, seven thousand homes and twenty bags, it's like, it's a lot of sandbags we would have. And we just, we don't have that, that quantity. But we're trying to give out as many as we can, you know, as many as we can for the citizens and, and let them, help them try to figure out how to protect their, their homes. Do you understand anything now?
There are certain groups in the city that are also preparing and stockpiling sandbags for members of their neighborhoods, things like that. We, you know, we, we're doing our best, but I think Dave said it's a lot of, it's 140,000 sandbags we would need to give everybody in the city, twenty sandbags. And so part of what we're doing is with this education is helping people realize they need to protect themselves because there is not enough resources at the city level to protect everybody. And our resources as flooding occurs, if, I mean, hopefully we won't see significant, but we'll be focused on those areas that are flooding, not those areas that are safe. You know, and so that's just, we're, that's kind of the focus. But it's, it'll, it's going to depend on other nature and the heat and the cold, the rain and the snow.
Another question we're getting quite frequently is, is if there's elderly people in your neighborhood you know about that could use the sandbags, we have an ability to be able to look up their, their name. As long as you give us the address that matches their name, we're giving people the sandbags to go take to those homes as well, so.
Thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you doing this.
David, quick, quick, quick question, sorry.
Don't worry, we've got more for you.
Yeah, what's the policy on, you know how the storm drain grates are covered in new developments? At what point are those supposed to come off? Because I, I've noticed an issue with 3675 where it's causing some problems. At what point are they supposed to?
So as long as there's any kind of construction in the subdivision, they're, they're expected to be there. Dylan's actually putting something together to where we're saying, hey, in these storm events like this, we're asking them to actually do some kind of like, like a waddle that goes around. It's like a hay waddle that goes around instead of, because those plastic ones don't, you know, once they get any kind of sand or sediment on top of it, they don't let anything, and so everything goes by, right? So we've been actually, they've been very proactive as far as inspections, Dylan and Crystal, about going and seeing like, hey, can we take these off? Will you guys put, you know, some kind of different, you know, like I said, the, the hay waddles, the, there's like sandbags that you can kind of put around those where it'll still let water penetrate, but it'll, but it'll still protect it from like mud and, and those, and debris coming down those, those areas. So they've been really working on, you know, in these, you know, these few months like this, maybe we need to start doing this going forward. Like, you know, you know, when we're in runoff season, that they just can't use those kind of the, the plastic ones that go over the top. So I'm glad you brought that up.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear that they're doing something.
Yeah, they're being very proactive as I were in castle.
Scott, anything else from you? Jamie, anything from you?
John. Yes, a couple of things. The Utah Supreme Court has ruled that transportation utility fees are allowed. So we will probably be asking the council if you want to explore that option again. As a reminder, that was the $3 that went to road reconstruction projects. But I don't think it's something we'll be doing in the near future, other than having the conversation of if that's the direction we want to go at some point in the future. The fiber companies are starting to lay fiber. If you hear concerns from residents, they should be getting a door hanger on their door as the stuff is happening. And you know, some residents have felt like that was not enough, that they deserved to be, you know, have someone sit down and talk with them for a while. They are always in the right of way or in the utilities. But the hard part is some of those utilities that are in front yards and rear yards. Most of it should all be in the front yard, but they're, they're trying to stay between the sidewalk and the street, but sometimes they're not because they just can't. And we've had at least a few folks upset that they're digging in their front yard. But that is, again, if you buy a house, look at the plat. There are things on the plat that you don't know when you buy a house, so. And then the Citizen Budget Committee is meeting tomorrow. It's kind of an off week for them, but they're just circling the wagons to make sure that, that we're heading the direction, or heading it. The, the information is getting to them in a right way and they can just have a good conversation as a group on what they'd like to see happening in the future. That's at three, it'll be on YouTube. But it is an, an off meeting, meaning it's not there regularly every other week, so. And then other than that, it's my daughter's birthday today, so. She is two. And she is the cutest little thing. I'll, I'll put a picture up here in a second. And she can all see her because she's adorable. But that's all I have, so I'll put it up while the council's talking.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Severance.
Yeah, but we need to conclude quick so John can get home to his daughter.
Yeah. Councilmember Exrum.
I, I hope she's asleep.
Yeah, just, I was, it, it's interesting that John brought that up, but I was thinking about that $3 road fee. One thing that I would say in favor of reinstituting it, just if you want to think about this, is that sometimes when you know, we, we do get to fixing the roads and, you know, sometimes it just gives me a warm feeling in my heart to know that I am paying a little extra to make sure that there is plenty of funds to get those roads fixed, especially when, as Chris Pulver pointed out, it is really bad this year after a winter like we've had, there's going to be a lot of potholes. So anyway, that was just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Exrum. The cake obviously is not big enough.
I, I told her not to touch her candle, so.
Councilmember Dowpas.
No comments.
Okay, I just have a couple. One, Chris, the potholes on Fruitland? All of the potholes on Fruitland are on county road? None of them are on city road. I promise. I'm kidding. Some parts of Fruitland are county road, some parts of it are city road. It's hard to distinguish, but I just thought I'd put it all on the counter. On the sandbags, just a reminder to anybody who's listening, share with your neighbors to please watch out for your neighbors. A lot of folks need bags, but they don't have a way to get them. Those of us that have, might have pickup trucks and things like that, just a reminder to let people know that if you can, you're willing to go out and grab ten bags or twenty bags or whatever and help them get those things. If we have a quick melt, there's a lot of water out there in those mountains. Thirty-seven inches of snow water equivalent sitting up on Ben Lomond right now. That is a, last year this time, I think it was eleven or twelve inches was sitting up there. And it's, it's an amazing amount of water that we have out there that if we have a quick warm-up, could come down very, very quickly. And so be prepared to help your neighbors and use whatever you can. And then last but not least, on the transportation utility fee, John, I think that is an excellent way for us to institute flash flood. And get that out to the residents and get the mind and will of the residents on whether or not they would like to do that to increase the amount of funds that we have available for road improvement and repair. Okay, anything else from anybody? Councilmember Exrum, we need somebody to give us a motion to adjourn.